Separate issues.
Okay, welcome everybody in the audience and online. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started today. This is Wednesday, June 28th. This day is for setup for Board of Equalization. Before we begin, at this time, I please start going to rise to say the pledge. Follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation in the land of God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Well, welcome everybody. We all know we're gathered here today to talk about assessment and valuations and trying to resolve some differences of opinion. And hopefully, we can go through this pretty quickly today. So we will, how do I say this Doug? We will resign as Board of County Commissioners and re-
You are-
We are in the Board of Equal-
convening as the Board of-
Convening, there we go. I can never think of that word. Convening as a Board of Equalization, so do you want us down there or do you like us up here?
You can sit wherever you'd like.
Normally, we go down there. We want to stay up here.
We need to swear in, everyone.
Right, that's the next thing. So at this time, I, do I just swear in the assessors or I swear in-
No, anybody who's testifying or presenting.
So do I do each person individually afterwards? Because we don't know who is until they're up here.
Well, I think these folks are probably your first six appeals.
Okay.
And I believe they'll probably all be presenting-
So if you are going to testify today, including the appraisers, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Okay, thank you. You may be seated. First one up, I'm assuming is at the top of the list. Oh, that's been withdrawn.
So the ones in yellow are the personal appearances.
You want to do those first.
Yep, and so the first one we're actually gonna hear is the McLean. So JM 2315 is the appeal number.
2315 Brendan Ronald McLean, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So at this time, I'll turn it over to you. All right.
And you get to go first.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns this morning. I think probably, we can go into detail, but if you recall, last year, we came in with the issue mainly that the, we live on a county road, however, the county is not taking responsibility to maintain the road, and we only have, we do not have any type of winter access. Now, last year, the Board of Equalization, I feel was very empathetic with us and granted us a 25% relief on the total package. Now, this year, when we received our assessment notice, we, our assessed value went up by 42%. So there was absolutely no consideration for what the Board of Equalization did for us last year. Now, I had three different meetings with the assessors. Initially, they granted us a 25% relief on land only, with absolutely no consideration for the buildings and improvements. So I am very concerned about that. Now, with the conditions that we're dealing with, it has an effect on the total parcel, not just on a small portion of that. The assessor feels very, very strongly that, no, these are two separate issues. I'm saying, they are not. If we put our property up for sale, we don't list it as two separate issues. It's a package deal. And the effect that the roads and accessibility has on us affects both the improvements as well as the land. And the next question that I would have is, last year, the Board once again approved the 25 or 30% reduction on the total package. This year, now they're coming back and say, nope, timeout, we're gonna change the rules. We're gonna allow the relief over here, but we're not gonna allow the relief over here. Why are we now dealing with a whole new set of rules? Is this custom, customary, and this is something that happens on a regular basis? I don't think so. So that's, that's my first question. Now, we can, I'm prepared to go through as much detail as you want, as far as justifying the road condition, accessibility issues, and so on. But my main concern, the first main concern is, we are a board of fairness and equalization. Last year, I thought you were very fair, and you have, you've equalized us by giving us relief on the total package. This year, I do not feel that we're being treated fairly and equally. By now changing the rules, I'm coming out and saying, no, we're gonna give you relief on a small portion, the rest of it, we're not even gonna consider that.
So David, I want to make sure I got this straight. You got a 25% relief last year, just on the house, not the land?
No, we got 25% relief on total.
All of it.
There's three-
And this year, we're only-
Yes, there's three different issues involved. First of all, is the one acre of property that the house improvement sets on. And then there's the buffer issue, which is excess over the one acre. And then there's the buildings and improvements. Last year, we got relief on all three issues. I have documentation of that. I have a letter from the Board of Equalizations last year stating that they are granting us the relief, and then also the calculation of the relief from last year. And it's very easy to see that it was included on all three issues, not just that small portion.
Okay, so then I guess the next question be for the appraiser. What have we got going here?
Okay, so I did meet with Ron twice. I believe he met with Jerry once. I try, I tried to explain to him, I realize the issues, you guys heard all of this last year, in this Hilltop Collier View area. I'm not sure where it stands with, if the road department has been directed to do anything with this. All I know is they were given an adjustment. And so I tried to explain to Ron that the adjustment, when you have these types of issues, so topography issues, location, and definitely access issues, the condition of the road is poor, always is addressed with the land value. So what happened this year is, they had been put in their own neighborhood to be able to give them that discount last year. When Anthony did the analysis, he merged some of the smaller neighborhoods into a bigger neighborhood for analysis purposes, and did, and he failed to remember that they had that negative adjustment for their own little, small neighborhood. And so he got rid of that neighborhood and put them in the bigger neighborhood. So then, we started to get phone calls in, and we realized, oh gosh, that's what happened. The, the adjustments didn't carry over. So at that point, we went in and we put a negative 25% adjustment on the total land value, and then sent out amended notices. So then, Ron came-
Just the land, not the house?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Because the type of issues that they have, you give that adjustment on the land value. It has nothing to do with the home. If the home had structural issues, damage, you know, tree fell on it, things of that nature, then that's when you start putting adjustments on the improvements, but, but not for the issues at hand for them. So Ron and I don't see eye to eye. He thinks we should have the adjustment on the home as well. Now, Ron only, out of the six people that you'll hear from this morning, is getting a negative 10% adjustment on his home, and that was applied in 2021. At that time, Christie had met with him, and she had given him that 10% adjustment back in 21.
So we got 25% off the land and 10% off the home last year?
Yes, and the year before.
And the year before, okay.
And this year. So after I started digging into it, then we got Ron's appeal. I started looking into it. I went and looked at all the others that are appealing right there in his area with the same issues. None of them were receiving an adjustment on their home, just Ron. And so I went, well, that's not fair to the others. So in his appeal packet, he did not offer any comparable sales. On your second page, it shows the subject at the bottom, and you've got several comps in there. And he, with the 10% on his home, adjustment on his home, he's at 21739 per square foot. If we were to take the 10% adjustment off, he'd be at 24155. I realize there's issues up there, and a negative 25 adjustment that they're all receiving on, not just the one acre, but if they're over an acre, they're getting it on the buffer as well, have definitely been addressed in the land value. And I would respectfully request that we keep the 25% on the land.
Is that-
The highlighted parcel is Ron's.
And that's, that's, everybody around him is getting the same 25%?
Yes. He's the only one that's getting a negative adjustment on the home.
Sue, tell me about BOE. They got something extra from the state last year?
No, it was from you guys.
Oh, just from us, okay.
Yeah. And I, I was not present for that hearing, and so I'm not, I cannot speak to that. I believe Ron has a, can I see that letter right there on top?
Yep.
It was reduced, because everybody was reduced up there with the same issues. And then, it appears that, I think this is Christie's writing, that she reduced everything. We'd have to go back and find the recordings, which is fine. I mean, that any BOE decision ends December 31st of that year. That the adjustments for, for a BOE decision is only good for that year. So then, the new year starts something completely different. I'm not saying that they don't need an adjustment on the land. I, I do believe they do. And hopefully, I, I don't know if the road department is working on any of those issues, if it's in the plan, on the task list, or if it's just gonna remain the way it is. I don't know.
Well, the last I remember on the road issue was that the developer on that development went bankrupt on Phase 2, did not get the road built. The mistake made was that building permits were issued anyway. So that's why we have the homes in there on a road that wasn't really built to anybody's standards. Basically, no logging road. We can't-
It's pretty rough.
We can't take on that certain part of that road because it's too steep.
Okay.
It's like 11 or-
Topography issue.
10 or 11% grade on that road, which we don't touch roads like that. We lose equipment when we try and take roads like that. I know there's been discussions in the past with some, some different folks about hiring a private contractor to go in and build that road as much as possible to county standards. Drainies, the coverts, all that, borrow pits, but that's gonna have to be up to you guys. I don't think it's fair to shove that cost back onto taxpayers for default on your developer. That's really where the issue lies. And we have lots of these on West Mountain. Same exact issue. It's a right-of-way, or I think some of it might be needed most, which is right-of-way, that's 30-foot right-of-way, that won't even work for a county road. And so there's gonna have to be some private folks step up and fix their own problem. And I don't think it's gonna be that much money, honestly. Now, once you do that, you're gonna realize now that you have a much better access to those houses, and that value will go up. So there's another business model to think about. I agree with Sue that the 10% adjustment on just yours, David, is not fair to your neighbors. I think that's a pretty big ask, but I do believe that 25% reduction on all land values is a fair trade until you guys get this road fixed.
A couple of members of that area had mentioned they were, they have reservations about doing anything to the road because they wanted the county to find them harmless, basically.
Hold harmless.
Hold harmless if they were to work on that road. So maybe, maybe they could schedule a meeting with you guys.
Get a permit from the road department to work in our right-of-way, right-of-way permit, and that would indemnify you then. But that would be a question for a prosecutor. Go ahead, David. I know you want to say-
Yeah, I've got a few comments I'd like to make and address Sue's issues that she brought up as well. First of all, you know, the road, to me, is a total separate issue, or repairing the road is a separate issue that we're talking about today. You know, and I would like to address that, and I think we need to address that. You know, some of the things that really concern me though, indicated this is our problem. It really isn't our problem. You know, there's documentation that the county did accept this as their road. They did accept the fact that they would maintain it. There was even a bond issued at, at the time that ironically, the money's disappeared, and nobody seems to know what's going on. So now you're telling us that this is our responsibility, but it's really not. I think, and I can't speak for the rest of the neighbors, but I'll speak for myself. You know, I, I really feel if we could work as, as a unit, work together, we could resolve this. You know, to me, we're not looking at putting $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 into it. We're looking at perhaps at least bringing it up to a standard or a level that it's a safe road to come in and out of. We just, my wife just recently purchased some patio furniture on, on the internet. The company refused to deliver it to our place because of the road condition. We had to have it delivered to a friend's house and go pick it up. Right, last year, I, I brought out the fact that we no longer have trash service in front of our house. The trash truck ripped a mud flap off their truck, coming around one of the exposed rocks. And, and so now, in order for us to continue the service, we have to take it down to the intersection of Collier View and here, Hilltop. Two days ago, I was having breakfast out on my back deck. A big truck was coming down Hilltop. They got to our, our property line. They stopped. They looked at the situation, decided they could not continue. They had to move the truck all around, readjust, and go back uphilltop. So we're dealing with a lot of serious issues. And again, I think it's, it's a joint effort. Yeah, I think we are willing, or at least in my opinion, we are willing to do our part, but I think the county has some responsibility here as well. And as Sue indicated too, if we are gonna take on some of that responsibility, we want a home, first of all, legally. I don't think we can go out and do anything to the road without permission from, from the county.
That's what I, it's called a right-of-way work permit. We do that with the phone companies, the power companies, the sewer districts that cut across our road for different, you know, utilities.
No cloud drivers.
I just brought it up because I knew it was a concern, and I wanted them to give you some direction if they could, and that's what he's trying to do.
We've had this discussion many, many years with different folks over this, and you know, I, I apologize at that time. Those old commissioners that let that bond go made a huge mistake. And that's the issue, is that now there's no money to do it. There's still, in the road department, no money to do that. However, I think maybe what we need to do is sit down and try and reach an agreement with the landowners out there, where maybe we can supply some of the material, and you guys supply the contractor to build it. I don't, you know, I don't know. We'll have to start that up process all over again.
I think we need all the documentation.
Open to that discussion. Again, I can't talk, talk for the neighborhood, but I do know that there's at least two and maybe three people on our loop that has excavating machines, and I think they are willing to come in and do some excavating work.
Well, let's send them in, and we'll get with our road superintendent and see what we can do to work out some kind of agreement. The one big issue, if I remember right, is around Hilltop on the east side was there's a big giant granite rock that sticks out in the right-of-way.
That's right across.
We can't get around with, with equipment. And that's gonna be a real hard cost to fix, because that's drill and blast. We don't have that technology. That may be something, and, and I don't know if we have the right-of-way from the lot owner that has that particular lot.
One of, one of my neighbors has got some equipment, and he said he's got a, some type of rock crusher. And again, I'm not an excavator, so I don't totally know, but he said he could come down and break that up so that, you know, that would level it off.
Well, why don't you get together with us later on, you know, as soon as you get your neighborhood together? Maybe get some kind of a HOA for that particular area so that you, two or three lot owners, aren't stuck with that cost. Everybody suffers that cost. You've gotta come to, come to that agreement, I think, first with your neighbors. Because I know last time, some folks were in and some folks were out, and they're okay with the road. And so we're kinda getting some mixed signals here, but if you could come as a group, three approaches, and we'll see what we can do. But right now, our road department is not only broke, but is really short on staff. So they're, they're, they're busy for the summer, but I'm willing to try it again if you guys can put it together.
Willing.
To me, that's a separate issue than this.
It's totally-
We're giving you a break for it, and I think that's a reasonable break on the land. However, I agree with Sue on the 10%, for just you. I think we gotta treat all improvements the same.
And I disagree for two reasons. Land only, and the main reason for it is, again, any real estate transaction, it deals in the total package. They don't separate off the two. I'll use a hypothetical type of illustration here. And again, you're not, we're not buying a new car, we're not car dealers. But let's assume that you were interested in going in and buying a brand-new car. Typically, we don't just go the first place and buy a car. We shop around. You go to one dealer and you find a good car, a really nice car, one you really like, got all the whistles and bells on to it. Whistles and bells, to me, relating to the property, is road maintenance, winter access, so on and so forth. You go to another dealer, and you find the same exact car, but it doesn't have all the same whistles and bells. It doesn't have air conditioning. It doesn't have a stereo system. It doesn't have custom type of wheels and so on. But now they're asking the same, same price for this car as what one is with all the whistles and bells. Now, which, which car are you gonna buy? I know which car I would buy, and that'd be the ones with the whistles and bells. So we're giving up a tremendous amount here. Plus, you know, the dealer is not gonna, again, separate that, that part out. Taking it one step farther, you know, maybe over here, you say, well, you know, I really don't need the air conditioning. I really, I can get by without that. I really don't need the, the stereo system. I really don't need the Grallic wheels. Are you still going to be willing to pay the same price? No, you're gonna expect a discount on it. Not just on certain items. You want a discount on the total car. We're talking the same thing here. How can we say, we got this property that is a unit, and all we're going to give up is a small portion of that? It affects the whole thing. Any real estate type of dealings, we know with anybody that deals in real estate, it's location, location, location. And in this case, if you had a choice, two houses, almost identical in value, one has nice roads, has winter 12 months of the year excess, the other one does not, which one is gonna have more value?
I understand what you're trying to say, David, and I-
And it's Ron.
But there's also people out there that would love to have a house that is on a road like this. They don't care about the road. It's more of the seclusion, and they're, they're not gonna be a lot of traffic going through there because of the road. So it just depends on what side of the coin you're looking at. I understand your, your comparison, but I think what you're asking for is the move.
I'd like to add into that. So we're not comparing against something somewhere else. We are comparing against properties exactly like yours. So it is not, that's what the appraisers are doing, is they're taking into account the situation that you're at, looking for like-kind comparables. And those comparables are what they're actually valuing this on. So it's to make it apples and apples. We're not comparing against somebody with a good road with no issues with it. That's why there is an adjustment.
But again, the adjustment, my, my argument though is adjustment isn't on just a small portion. It affects the value of the whole parcel, not just a small, small portion.
So if you think about that-
Only common sense. And again, you know, you're in agreement last year, and why do you disagree this year? You know, that, that doesn't make any-
I'm, I'm, I don't think we're in disagreement on the land break, the break for the land, but the houses-
We aren't either.
Improvement shouldn't be included in that.
We aren't-
You got an extra 10%, and your neighbors didn't. That's what we're fixing today.
Well, okay, and it's just to address that. When I first met with Sue, she brought that to my attention. I said, why were we originally given that? And she said, I don't know. And so I said, well, I'd like to know. And she says, well, it's something, it's something that was done beforehand. It's not gonna be an issue. I'm not gonna address that. It will just stay. Now, today, she's coming back and saying, no, I rescind what I said. We're gonna remove it.
That's because when I got his appeal, and then I went and looked at the other neighbors, they were not receiving the same adjustment that he was. And that, I think, is not fair. I think the 25% is absolutely fair, but I just don't feel like 10%. If all of them would have been receiving it, then it would have been fair, but they're, they weren't.
So outside of the fairness issue, by bringing it down on the ground itself, does that bring into, does it bring them into sales comparables? The values are like-kind? Or do we need to put the 10% on it to bring it into the range of the sales?
So if you'll look at page two, where my comps are, I highlighted the subject property, and you'll see that he's at 217 with the 10% adjustment on the house. Without the 10% adjustment on his house, he comes in at 24155. So the, the average plus sale that I have right there in his immediate area comes in at 24241. So they're just about a dollar apart per square foot on the same house grade as the subject. I only have that one average plus sale in there, in his immediate neighborhood. I wanted to use sales as close to him as I could get. But as you see, the first three lines are a half a grade below him, and then the two lines below are a half a grade above him. I put those in just so you could see where we were at. It helps paint the picture that, you know, he's being, well, he's being under-assessed, really, with the 10% adjustment. Now, if you take that 10% off, he comes in at 24155, which is within a dollar of the comp that is the same grade as him in his, in his neighborhood.
In his neighborhood. Okay, so these are all within his neighborhood, or relatively.
Yeah, so the first one is over on the other side of the hill, but lines three, four, five, six are all in his immediate neighborhood. And line seven, I think, is West Mountain, 00200. That's a West Mountain property, but it's a half a grade above him anyway.
My question is, you said they're in our neighborhood. Do they also fall under the same umbrella as we do, that they are not, they are on a county road that is not maintained? Are they on a road that is accessible 12 months out of the year as opposed to seven months out of the year?
They're in those Ponderosa subdivision.
Ponderosa 2, they're in our subdivision?
Yeah, well, we'd have to look each one up.
Well, that, you know, again, we-
But they're right there in that immediate area, yes.
Immediate area makes a big difference. If I was down at-
They are, they are in your immediate area.
Well, yeah, but the immediate area, if I'm down close to Lakefront Road, they've got accessibility. They've got graded, graded roads. They've got accessibility 12 months out of the year. So that's not a comparable type of situation. That's comparing an apple with an orange.
Sue's gonna bring up each parcel that is a comp, and show you on them up where they're at.
Sue, is there any way we could split this section of Ponderosa 2 into a separate neighborhood? Just the area that has the unbuilt road? Have you combined it with the Ponderosa North? Is that the whole neighborhood?
Well, they're, they're all in the same neighborhood, as they should be, but they're receiving that large negative 25% adjustment on the ones that are affected by the issue at hand.
I think another-
That's the most fairest way to do it.
That's the fairest way, yeah.
But another, I think, important- But another, I think, important issue, our little circle here, there's only about three or four of us that have a permanent structure type of home. We are the ones that are affected. You know, the people that have only land and most of the property being sold, they're coming in, they're putting a driveway in, bringing a camper in. So with a twenty-five percent adjustment on land only, they're pretty happy campers. You know, that puts them right in line with everybody else.
That's a good pun. That was a good pun, happy campers.
That was a good one.
It did fun.
Good planning, yes. I think you're, you're probably right. Yeah, the, the other thing too, getting back to separating the two, you know. I could understand the rationale of these being two separate issues if I had a mobile home setting on our lot. And the person comes in and says, oh, I'm interested in land, I'm not interested in the home. All I gotta do is back a truck up to the mobile home, pull it out of there, no problem. But that's not the situation. Reality is, this is a permanent home and it's all one parcel, all one grouping, not just separating it out.
So Sue, I can see the sale, um, is on Collier View, which is lower.
So this, uh, line three, the RP, uh, zero, zero, two, zero, one, to the north of Ron's property. It's in the same Ponderosa Estates, but I believe it.
It's just a little further to the north.
Yeah, it's further to the north, it's not.
But the road is better there.
Yeah, the road.
It is.
So this is, this is where, this down here is Ron's subdivision, it's the Ponderosa Estate two.
And Ron, where does, on that map, where does the road start to deteriorate to the point where it's not year round?
At the intersection of, of Collier View, View and Hilltop.
Yep, so all of those properties don't have year round access.
This whole loop right here.
You driven that?
Yeah, and down, well, I'd go and show you, but the issue honestly with that road, as far as the road department in the county are concerned, is, if you could raise it up a little bit, this section of road somewhere through here has a big giant granite rock that's in the road. So you actually kind of lean and go around the corner.
I drove up there and I didn't go around that either, I turned around.
And it's, uh.
I couldn't figure out where I, I was going.
Way above our six percent grade. And so that's really, I think, the biggest issue is trying to fix that road is that lot owner's gonna have to figure out a way to get some, eat some of that right away, so we can build the road wide enough to make it safe and, and less steep. And I don't know if that's ever gonna happen.
I guess my question is, what, to what standard is a county agreeable to bring this up to? You know, we're not looking at.
That's a totally separate conversation. I'm not willing to make a statement on that.
It's an important conversation too. And, and, you know, again, I think.
Let's have a workshop on it though, we keep talking about it.
Any type of reason, reasonable complaint.
Well, we need to get the road supervisor involved. If you look down at the very bottom of the screen, you see Hilltop Road, it goes off down to, what is there, five lots down there as well? So there's a lot of development in that area that has happened and that could happen.
Bring up where the sale is, is that where the sale is?
This is, this is the one sale that's highlighted on your spreadsheet that was in the same subdivision.
So the road in that location, people can get in and out of there year round? I'm sorry?
They can come in from the other direction.
They come in from the, at their.
But they have year round access.
At their expense. Rick White up on the top here has some health issues. He's probably one of the best examples. Now, up until a couple of years ago, he maintained the road himself. He had a tractor with a snow blower, all kinds of equipments, and so he would keep that open during the winter months. His health has deteriorated to the point where he no longer can do that. He had to sell the tractor. Now, he has to hire a independent contractor to do snow removal all the way from the intersection up to his house in order for him to continue to live there. It's sad, unfortunate part of that, Rick loves the situation there. He loves the mountains, he, he's been there for many, many years. Because of the condition now, he knows that probably within the next one to two years, he's gonna have to sell. That there's just physically no way that he can continue to live there. Plus, the per, the people that are doing the snow removal have already told him that they're not sure that they can continue to do that because the condition of the road is deteriorating their, their machines to a big degree. So he may even have to move out sooner than that because he's not able to continue to keep the road.
But is the house the one that's sold?
No, it's, it's a big, just up from that. He's on the very top.
Very top here?
Yeah. Well.
Down? I can click on it.
So when the house sold, that sold in there? Yep, lot fifty. Somebody took all of the road into account when they paid the amount of money that they're paying.
So lot fifty-seven sold?
Yeah, that's this one.
Yeah, where's that one at?
Right there.
There we go. So that one sold, which is affected, uh, lot fifty sold? This, um.
When does that end in, Sue?
Yeah, two one two.
But again, my concern on that, these are lots that people really, probably don't have an intent of putting a permanent home, home on there. So it's not really gonna have the effect on, on those properties as it is with, with a permanent home.
Well, I'm showing a dwelling on the one that's sold.
Two one two, lot seventy-six, sold.
And I'm showing somebody paid in September of twenty-one, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars per house in there.
I'm adjusting the one thirty.
This one down here.
One that was just.
One located where?
Is that off Landale?
See, Landale's a entirely different story. They've got winter excess, they've got snow removal.
That's what I'm trying to get to, is where are these things selling that actually have?
So all of these except for, uh, lot fifty-seven that I have highlighted right now, the rest of them were sold just to the north of the intersection that happened.
Okay.
So they do have access. They are not receiving a discount either.
Okay. So last year in BOE, is this true that we actually gave it on the entire parcel? Or did we give it on the land last year?
I cannot speak up, I know.
Just on the land? Okay.
No, no, I'm, I'm no. You're talking about last year?
The neighborhood covered the whole area.
But what I'm asking is, is when we did the adjustment, was it twenty-five percent just on the land in that neighborhood or on the entire parcel? Because if we did it on the entire parcel last year, we should be doing it on the entire property this year. We shouldn't change that.
I don't know.
I have to ask Anthony exactly how he sets that up, but I know when he gave it its own neighborhood, it had a reduction. And to figure out how that reduction was affected versus improvement to the land, I would have to ask Anthony.
Who's here?
Can I?
Twenty-five percent?
They were in their own neighborhood, so they were all.
I think we have that.
Well, and we can table this and.
The adjustment was on everything.
And that's on McLean, right?
What?
McLean, okay. Getting different names, so I'm sorry, but are you Ron or David?
I'm Ron.
El, El, Els been calling him David, but, you know.
It's Ron. I don't know who I'm talking to, honestly. I thought it was Ron.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make another, another point here too.
And then we're gonna wrap this up.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you, you know, you made the statement that, you know, some people like the idea of coming, coming, having a secluded area, being able to come in and not have a hassle of, of a, a road that's well maintained. My three most immediate neighbors, i.e. I talked about Rick White, Jeff Krigel, right across the road from me, and Mike Falconer. Those two, Jeff is directly across the, the road from me, Mike, our land faces both Hilltop and Collier View. Mike is across the road from me on Collier View. Both Jeff and Mike have expressed concerns to me. They both have said, look, I am so tired of dealing with the situation, not getting that much satisfaction, that I am ready to sell. Both Jeff and Mike have expressed to me personally that they are at the point, they are just exhausted, they're tired of dealing with the situation, that they're, they're seriously considering selling. So three of my immediate neighbors are saying, we've had it.
But why don't they just fix the road?
Well, again, why, why should we? Why should we?
I understand.
Li- listen, okay, let me give you another illustration. If your next door neighbor said, the heck with it, I'm not gonna deal, I'm not gonna do anything with my buildings whatsoever. Let them totally deteriorate for twenty-five or thirty years. Now they're at the point where they're a major distraction, they're affecting the value of your property. So you go, you confront your neighbor and say, look, we got a problem here. Your neighbor says, fine, if you don't like it, you fix it. You come in, you buy the material, you do all the work, and I'll be fine, happy, and now the value of your property will go back up. Are you, are you gonna accept that? Are you gonna do all the work for your neighbor? I don't think so.
Oh, Ron, this is a different conversation. We, I've been here for three and a half years now, we've had this conversation since then, and every time it's been the same conversation. We need a workshop, you guys need to bring in all the proof that you have, because I haven't seen it. And I have not, you know, we have many roads in the county that are not county maintained. This is one of them. Even if it had been built to standards, I mean, we have many subdivisions that are managed by the homeowners association. That's the way that the county works. We have very few roads that are actually maintained year round by this county. And I don't see that changing. And so HOAs have been formed in these subdivisions to take care of them. And that is a conversation we need to have, but we've been having it now for the three and a half years I've been here. So if people are tired of it, I mean, honestly, I'm kind of getting tired of the conversation also. So let's have a workshop with a final outcome and put it behind us. Because it, I'm telling you right now that there is, I don't, I don't know what the percentage basis, but it's very high of roads that are not maintained by Valley County. All of West Mountain, all of CR, all of the Campbell Creek, all that stuff over there are all maintained by the homeowners associations.
Are they getting any type of relief or satisf, adjustments because, okay?
And their homes are selling.
Then to me, shame on them.
Their homes are selling. And it's on comparables. It's not based on that.
I wanna make sure what we're doing today is all we're doing is taking off the ten percent break off of.
But his.
His property.
The twenty-five percent adjustment on the land has already been applied.
And that's for everybody in that area.
It, it's been taken, that's been taken care of.
Okay, and his argument, he thinks it should come off the house, which I disagree with. So all we're doing is basically balancing and equalizing all those.
Well, if you wanna be fair and equitable to all of his neighbors, you know, after I did more research, they weren't receiving the adjustment. I just assumed they were. And when I talked to him. So I'm not trying to go back on what I told Ron, I, that, that's not my intention. But after I was able to research all the others and had time to do so, I realized they weren't getting that additional ten percent off on their improvements.
The temporary, but they're getting the twenty-five percent.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's where I'm coming from, we're treating everybody the same in that neighborhood. So I'm gonna go ahead then and make the motion that we deny.
Do we have one more conversation?
No, let's move on.
Yeah, I think you need to hear from the rest of us. We were told that.
Oh, I thought we were doing one at a time?
We are, doing one at a time.
Okay, so this is for the ten percent break on your residents, that's what we're talking about. I'm gonna make the motion, we deny the appeal. And treat everybody the same in that neighborhood, you're still getting the twenty-five percent on the land.
Let me make sure I'm understanding, you're saying you're only dealing with the ten percent that we're receiving, that's not equal to everybody. You're not, you haven't made a decision yet on whether the twenty-five percent should be on the total package as opposed to landowner.
I'm going with the appraiser's recommendation that we kept that twenty-five percent.
But what about the, the buildings and improvements?
Just the land, because we have bare lots, everybody gets treated the same. And as you know, you can take this to the state, to BTA, and have them look at it. If they disagree or change it, then we'll abide by their wishes. If you don't like what they did, you can take it to district court.
We're aware of that.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion, we deny appeal number JM two, three, one, five.
Oh, second.
Who did second at all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And I will register as opposed because I would like to know what we did last year.
We did this, the twenty-five percent last year.
They don't know that.
I'm sorry, did you say you?
The conversation was that we put it on the entire parcel last year, not just the lot. And I would like to know what we did.
It was on the entire subdivision, it was put into its own neighborhood. And when Anthony does his analysis, that brings the value within that neighborhood down, which in turn would affect the improvement and the land. But it depends on how he actually goes in and does his ratios on the land and the home. Now, did, did the whole entire thing get a twenty-five percent? That I cannot guarantee. It could have been the land only got fifteen percent and the home got ten. Maybe the overall, if you did value to value, totals might have been a total of twenty-five percent. That would be something I'd have to look.
But every, but every lot owner in there, whether they had a house or not, got a twenty-five percent reduction.
Yes, yes.
And the point of the matter is, is the decision from last year ends on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. But it set a precedence in my mind.
Yeah, sure, January first, January first is a new year. And so here we are again in the Board of Equalization, which is fine. But sometimes things get a little convoluted when you're saying, give them a twenty-five percent reduction on the land or give them a twenty-five percent reduction on the land and improvements.
Well, I think if we created a subdivision last year, it set them apart as a neighborhood, it set them apart from everyone else.
Hmm.
And so in my mind, we should look at what that looked like and continue with that premise this year. And I'm not hearing that we did, but that's my opinion. You've got two others with a different opinion.
I don't know if it had to do with sales in that area of the reasons why they got pulled out. The analysis got broadened.
Did we vote on that? We did, didn't we? Okay.
Just one final statement, I guess, I appreciate what you're saying, that I feel the same, same way, that I think there was a precedent sent last, last year.
There's three of us and so you have to have the majority of the board to agree with that.
Well, I, and I, and I, I realize that as well too, so, uh, just gonna make another point now, I can't remember exactly what.
Well, I think in the meantime, I'm sure Sue's gonna look at what Anthony actually did for those lots, whether it was off the land or if it was off both the house and the land, and we'll, we'll make those adjustments.
So you are saying that you will at least consider, depending on the outcomes and what they find, you'll at least consider it's not a total done deal at this point in time?
Well, I was trying to look at the land values and to see, you know, the land was two hundred and two, four sixty-six, and the house was five sixty-six. So apparently they just, maybe I can do that.
What is your, what's your question? I'm sorry.
So what's the new value?
Well, the, okay, this is, this is him.
Yep, 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 yep.
His information.
Here's the land, here's the house.
So this is what he's assessed at now. If you took the ten percent off, which I think is what we're authorizing, then he comes in at two forty-one, which is right below the same grade, um, right here.
So we don't really know where they took the twenty-five percent off.
No, because I'll, I'll, I'm going to address this with Anthony. Um, but the point is, is December thirty-first, all those decisions expire.
Mm-hmm.
And so moving forward into two thousand twenty-three, we're readdressing it. But the issues at hand for the road are always addressed on the land value, not the improvement value. So if you have a house sitting in Cascade that is identical to a house sitting in Donley or Lake Fork, it's still gonna be the same house. So they should be assessed the same, otherwise it becomes unfair.
So next year, or in the future, if we see a twenty-five percent reduction, it should come off? If we determine it's a land value, this would be a different number here. If we determine it's a land value, this would be a different number here.
Right. And I'm not gonna pull the negative twenty-five percent off for next year, not until the road is, is up to standards, I guess. It's, I mean.
There's a lot of roads in this county that are not up to standards.
I know that.
So, it's the passability, it's the year-round access to me that makes a difference. Because CR, some of them have, you know, year-round, some of them don't. But again, that's on the homeowners. If you want year-round access, you hire somebody to come in and plow it, because that's what most people in Valley County have to do. I have mine plowed also. You think they did that minus ten percent?
That was back in twenty, two thousand twenty-one, so a year before. Um, Chrissy had just applied the negative adjustment to the home. I don't know what the details of the conversation were. I suspect it probably had something to do with these issues, but.
It may have had it, it may have been tied to the road.
It should have been applied to the land rather than the improvements.
Right. And where did the twenty-five percent come from?
That was something that I believe you guys decided last year. And so we went with the same amount, well, whomever, I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, it's Neil's fault.
Now, I, I think how that happened, we made a request for a twenty percent reduction. Another individual made a request for a thirty percent reduction aboard the equalizations that were compromised.
You're right, Ryan, I remembered that, you know. Thank you. And I got it right that time. Okay, well, we're, we're gonna treat everybody the same as.
I checked that. I think you just need to sign a date.
Uh, twenty-eighth?
Yes. And hold on, we need to fix something else. Where's that top page?
I guess another question I've got, now, all these things, what I'm hearing, come to an end at the end, end of the year. Now, I, I guess I did not understand that. I was under the assumption that if we're granted some relief, that would stay until that condition was improved. But I'm hearing you say that's not the condition that, that every year this will be evaluated.
Because of different commissioners. I'm not sure the code will allow us to do that. It's more of an assessor code that determines that. That's something we'd have to look into. It's not a permanent deal forever.
Well, it would appear that there should be a simpler process if this is the case, that, you know, if, if it is approved this year, then next year, rather than having to go through the whole nine yards, you know, it takes a lot of our time, takes a lot of your time to go through the whole process.
I'm not gonna take it off the land. It'll stay on there.
That's not your, your final decision, Sue. This is the Board of Equalization's decision, whether you're gonna take it off or not.
No, it's my decision if I pull it off at the end of the year, which I'm not going to, is what I'm saying.
All right, okay.
The reason it happened this year is because he absorbed this little tiny neighborhood into the bigger one, and it was overlooked. So as soon as you guys brought that to our attention, we fixed it.
Fixed part of it.
We fixed a proportion that was pulled off.
Fixed part of it.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Where do you wanna go to next, Sue, on down the list?
Um, so we have, oh, sorry.
Twenty-three thirteen?
Um, let's see, I think the people, who's here for? What's your name?
David.
David Swinson.
Come on up.
I have, David is on the screen.
See what you win.
Okay, Mr. Swinson is JM twenty-three twelve. Okay, I need to finish filling this out, so keep this handy for, do not lose this. Okay, hold on.
So before we start, David, I wanna make sure I'm keeping up here. We did twenty-three fifty.
Okay, so twenty-three twelve.
Yeah, we did a number.
Okay, so this is JM twenty-three twelve, David and Mary Lee Swinson.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, there, this is what fits in.
Yeah, and then I have the original here, I guess. This is why I got the name wrong.
Uh, you can throw that away. I have the original. Now I'll give it to Doug. So that's this one. Thank you.
Okay, are we good?
I'm, I'm giving Mr. Swinson this.
So at this time, David, I will turn it over to you.
Well, I don't wanna repeat this whole.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Um, I, I think in, in my mind, my, my concerns, I sat here last year with, you weren't here, is that right?
No, it's another commissioner last year.
I remember you two. And we went through all of this and decided with, and Anthony was involved in that, that there should be about a thirty percent. I remember I asked for forty. And they decided on thirty percent. And then the question, and I think you asked it, was, is this just on the land? And the decision that the Board made at that point was that this applied to land and improvements. So when they did the worksheet, this is the copy they sent me, they took thirty-five percent off the land and twenty-one percent off the improvement. Now, why did you do that? And if you did it then, why aren't you doing it this year? Question.
I'm.
Oh, everything, the total value. That's kinda what I read.
And then they called in, and then we went back in and applied a twenty-five on the land. Because the issues they have, topography, location and access, are all issues that we would reduce the land value for, but not the improvements.
Is it really?
So they basically got an extra bonus last year. It's really not the way it should have been, but that, that, that's okay.
Well, we just don't wanna fight this every year.
We don't want to either.
Every time we have a new assessor and the, and the practice changes, we don't wanna go through this every time. And I think, even on, I don't have any big complaints about the assessed value of our property. You, you don't have good comps. You have a few comps, but you don't have good ones.
Not really comparable.
That's right. So I don't have any basis to complain about what you've assessed me at. But I do complain that you're changing the ground rules with us when it comes to, last year you, you felt it was right to adjust the total value. Because if you're talking about market values, that's what we're talking about. It, if there are reasons that, that justify the deduction of whatever it was, twenty-five, in my case, twenty-seven percent, those pertain to the market value.
The other issue too, that I think is rattling around the back of my head, is that if we have a topography or a land use, I know one year we had a lakefront property that requested a lower value because their beach was washing away. And we gave that reduction to the land only, we didn't give it to the improvements.
I, I understand that there's, there's a difference here in, in how that's to be interpreted, whether it's just land or whether we're talking about market value. I think market value does enter into your, your appraisal of the value of property. And the, the value of a property, if you don't have some of the same access and, I mean, people aren't gonna pay the same. Ron went through that whole thing, and I'm not gonna repeat it. But I think you did it last week, uh, last year, you did it right. You guys agreed on it last year. And just because the calendar changes, I don't think that changes.
So, and, and Sue, on this one, you said you have applied a negative twenty-five percent to the land.
Yes.
So now we're changing back to just the land this year. Is that the goal? Is that the intention?
Well, that's the appropriate thing to do when you have topography, location and access issues.
It's to the land, not to the house.
It's always applied to the land, not to the improvements.
And that's based on state statute, that's how they.
Yeah, it's just appraisal practice.
Right.
The fact that they got an addition, the, the fact that they got a discount off of both land and improvements because they were put into their own neighborhood last year, it, it was, it was an excessive reduction. It should not have been done on the improvements.
I think.
But it was, and that's okay.
Well, the problem is not just that, um, this is a land issue. Um, you are comparing our property value with comparables that in all respects were the same, except they had completely different benefits. I mean, you're comparing me to a property, um, that people can enjoy all year round.
Okay, but.
And then taking their value and applying that to my value. People aren't gonna pay that from my house.
Okay. We are required by Idaho code to assess property at full market value.
That's right.
We have a ten percent window, we can be low or we can be high to be in compliance with the State Tax Commission. Okay? So we have to take the sales that are reported to us, then we analyze them. We figure out if we're within that ten percent window, and if we're not, we either need to raise our values or lower our values to be within that ten percent full market value. Okay?
That's why they change.
If, if you guys want us to look at comparables, then it is, it, it's your responsibility to bring us comparables with similar issues in, in, you know, obviously it's not gonna be right in your area. But you are receiving, everybody is valued at market value, and now you're getting a twenty-five percent reduction on your land, whereas the sales are not. So we are recognizing you have an issue. So we gave you a reduction on your land of twenty-five percent.
So when, let me get this in my head, cause this is all new to me. So that when somebody comes in and they get an appraisal on their property, it praises for X, and they sell that property for whatever that praised value is, they're not taking into account of the road or anything else. They're buying a piece of property. If it's got improvements on it, a house, a barn, whatever, they're buying that piece of property. And the only thing is, on your guys' part, is that when the roads need to be approved, you have a way to scale that back. That's the twenty-five percent on the land. Because topography or road improvement or whatever, you guys are allowed to do that, and that's why you give them twenty-five percent break on the land itself.
Yeah, cause there's issues. There's issues up there, and, and they do need to be corrected. And hopefully, they can work with you guys in the road department to get those issues taken care of. In the meantime, they've brought the issues to our attention, we have reduced their land value by twenty-five percent, which is a very large adjustment for, in our world, just so you know. Um, because we understand there are problems, and I'm hoping that a resolution can, can come about and everybody can work together to correct the problems. If they ever get corrected, obviously I would feel comfortable removing that adjustment at that time. I'm, I, I understand they don't wanna come back every year, I get it. I don't wanna come back every year and, and rehash the same problem either.
Right.
So this year, the negative twenty-five should have stayed on the land. The neighborhood changed, it didn't carry over. They brought it to our attention, we went back in, we applied it, sent out amended notices.
And this time, we're just leaving it?
It should have been on the land.
Right.
It was incorrectly applied last year to the land and the improvement.
Which is a bigger break for them, last year.
Well, yeah. It should have been applied to the land, and it's okay. You guys, the, the way things go sometimes, we don't always realize what we're doing.
We've, we've kinda gone through this again and again and again.
So June, the one.
All I'm saying is that we made adjustments last year to reflect the, the problem you have is comps. You're comparing, you don't have good comps. And so we, we protested because you were comparing us with bad, it was bad comparisons.
But, and we're just asking you, if, if that's the problem, then you need to bring comps in.
Please. You don't have good comps. You compared us with places that were of greater value than we could possibly get, should we sell our places. And I don't know how you, it doesn't matter to me, as a homeowner, how you worked the discounts. And, and maybe the way they did the discounts doesn't fly with some of your practices now. But I don't think you should take away the discounts, because they reflect the difference in market value. I'm more concerned about market value. You're concerned about land issues and topography. And on that basis, that's our appeal. That you give us the same deduction, okay, you do it this year that you gave us last year.
David, let me ask you a question. So Sue, on this sheet down at the bottom, where you have the land value, is the hundred and sixty-two, seven seventy-eight before or after the twenty-five percent reduction?
He's receiving a twenty-five percent reduction on that value.
So the one sixty-two, seven seventy-eight is already reduced.
Yes.
So the actual land value was over two hundred thousand dollars?
Generally, when a property owner files an appeal, they have to bring in comps to prove our values erroneous.
So David, when you responded to this, you said that you thought that the market value should be four hundred thousand. So if we were to apply a twenty-five percent reduction on that, on all of it, you're clear down to three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which would be under what you were thinking it should be in the first place.
Like I said, I, I don't have so much of a dispute about the total that I'm being assessed on. I, in the sense that they, they have raised my assessment, yeah, I, I get that. But I just think you should be, don't, don't change horses here just because January first showed up.
So did we?
You guys agreed on this last year. And as I walked out of the door last year, I turned and I said, see you next year. I, I don't wanna do that.
So you just want consistent process year after year. And I think Sue's already stated that that was a mistake the way it was done last year. And you guys got a big, let me finish. And you got a big break on the value, because you got that value off your house as well. We're gonna fix the problem this year and do just off the land, and then we're gonna be consistent with that here on.
Until the problems are cured, whenever that may be.
And I think if the road is cured someday, you're gonna be shocked at your values. Cause now we, we are gonna use it, those comparables.
So those comparables will be, you'll be able, I'll be. So those comparables will be, you'll be able, I'll be shocked because my value is going to go up. It's not now, when you compare it to the comparables. You, you, you're comparing. Okay. The house that sold, the cabinet sold up on Hilltop Road this last year, sold for 500 grand.
Was that on land or something?
I don't have that figured, so I can't.
I'm not sure. Is it lot 57 that you're referring to?
It's the one that's perched right up on.
485, 485.
And your time adjustment's almost 500,000.
That's what it is. Okay. Could I sell my house for that?
Well, they're being assessed at $359 a square foot, and Mr. Swenson is at 248.
There's a difference in construction given.
Same grade, same grade. The subject property is built in 94, and that particular sale was built in 2008.
And I guess what we have to rely on, first of all, I was a real estate agent, and I, up until this last year, tracked every single sale that these guys were following. And I was in concurrence with them. I was selling in the market. I'm not anymore. But I actually, um, made sure that I felt comfortable, that our appraisers were on task, and they were. These guys do a fabulous job. So I think when we come in, we are taking recommendations. Now, last year, we may have had one year, it was one year off, correct? I mean, it wasn't something that we discontinued this year after numerous years. Last year, we received information that obviously was not correct. So it's, do we continue doing something that's not correct, or do we fix it? And that's the whole, you know, issue, is it's being raised in all of these. So I don't know if your home would sell for 500,000. I'd have to go in and do a real estate appraisal on it, which is what these people do for a living. So I have to take their word that, you know, until we have information in front of us that something different, that you actually have sales in your neighborhood that have been decreased because of, you know, these things.
It sounds like this whole thing with Anthony's putting us in a separate.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood. Maybe that needs to be worked out.
And I think that's, I'm hoping that's what Sue's going to take back is maybe we don't need to combine this with.
I will pursue this.
We need to keep this a separate neighborhood because it's a different road issue. And I think it sounds like she's going to do that.
I will pursue that.
And honestly, everybody makes a mistake. Anybody who's doing anything is going to make a mistake, and we learn from the mistakes and fix it and go on. We don't keep making the same mistake year after year. That's the important part.
We didn't feel like you made a mistake.
Yeah, I know. I bet not. I bet not.
And that's where we differ, because there was a mistake made, and that's okay. We make mistakes. We move, we learn from them, and we move on, and we make corrections as necessary.
And if we were to put the 25% on your entire property, that would bring your value down to 338,000. And yes, I think you can get more than that. We've got very lots all over the county going for that.
I, I, I get that.
Okay, so your recommendation is to stick with the appraised value with the 25% reduction to the land only. I hope everybody hears that, to the land only. So I'm going to make a motion that we deny appeal number 23-12 and accept the appraiser's recommended valuation.
A second.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Want me to sign this one?
Yeah, this is the original.
Oh, that's the original?
Doug and I are doing it a little different this year. I'm going to give all the originals to him once after we make sure that any changes are done in the county system. And I'm going to personally.
Do we have any other areas in the county where there's a subdivision that's been, you know, a separate code for these types of?
Subdivision neighborhood? No.
So this is the only neighborhood that we're addressing this way?
This is the only area that, and I think he did that to address, so he was fair and equitable to everybody in that area as a fix.
Okay.
I will discuss with him if, yeah. I don't know, there's many things to discuss.
It's like CR, because CR is a mess on their road, so nothing's happening over there. Okay.
No, nothing. They are all in the same neighborhood. And I think that was probably his thinking of, oh, we'd have all these in the same neighborhood now. And he just missed putting the, the land adjustment on those like they should have been. When it was brought to our attention, we fixed it, sent out amended notices.
Okay, they didn't like the fix, so it's, I get it.
Okay, where are we going next?
Uh, who else?
I have Michael on the screen right now.
Mr. Falconer?
2313.
He went through his.
Oh, he did?
He did?
He went through his BOE.
He did?
Michael, no, Michael.
No, he didn't.
No, not Falconer. I'm sorry. I had him choose someone else.
Michael is not here. He is in Florida visiting his son.
No, 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 that's fine. I'm, I'm sorry.
But he did give me authorization to speak.
You have anything in writing that says that?
I have a text or an email from him.
In the appeal packet, there was a affidavit if someone was going to represent on his behalf. Has he provided that? His appeal will still be heard. It just, obviously, he's not here to represent. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to not make you guys wait forever. So whoever is here, I'd like to do the next. So who would like to go?
You're heard.
You're heard? Okay. Come on up.
So this is appeal number JM 2314.
Yes.
Just clear the path a little more and then.
Robert Gerhart, welcome, Robert. Let Sue hand out the packets so we know where we're coming from, and then we'll turn it over to you.
Sue, this looks like the same we just dealt with.
I know. But they filed an appeal, so they have a right to be heard.
I know. I'm just saying.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, Robert, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm the same situation with everybody. Obviously, we're all talking, okay? So, you know, we know. We, we know the values of people's property. We know what's going on with the road, who's doing what, what can we do, what can't we do, okay? I live at the very end of Collier View, so I've got a whole mile, basically, of that unimproved road that I have to deal with. And I'm probably up there more than anybody else. In fact, this last year, I was up there almost all year. So I had to deal with everything that the weather threw at us. Last year, my assessment went up 70%. I, I thought that was excessive. And so I filed an appeal last year, and we got that break, okay? This year, my overall assessment's up 40% from the break that I was given last year. I mean, based on what I have to do to that road to get access to my cabin, I mean, it's, it's a lot more than what other people have to do a mile away, okay? Now, there's talk about the road condition only affecting the land. I, I just totally disagree with that. I totally disagree. And, you know, maybe we should get a group of real estate agents in here and talk about it. Because they have actually come down and talked to me at my cabin if I'm the guy that a new potential property owner has to pay to clear the road. Okay, so I know that people are interested in the road, in what's happening with the road, and whether they're going to buy or not. It does affect property values. I'm sorry. I don't know where you get this definition that assessed value is only to land. That is absurd. The assessed value is on the fair market value of the total package of the property. And, and accessibility is one of the factors that affects the total fair market value of your property. I, I know it. When real estate agents come down and indicate that somebody's curious about access, you know, that tells you that, you know, it's, it's affecting everything, and it is going to affect my property. If, if I tell somebody, "You're going to have to, you're going to have to plow that road by yourself for four to five months out of the year to get access," you really think I'm going to get the same value as somebody a mile away who only has to plow their driveway? No, I, I, I just don't think so. And so, you know, I'm coming from the same position as everybody else. We were given the break across everything last year. We should have it this year. Get, get with Anthony. Anthony seemed to have his act together, and I know that, you know, you guys are looking to do that. You're going to talk with Anthony, you know?
Anthony is my employee.
Okay, but, you know, he did all this stuff last year, okay? And yeah, I know he's still on retainer to do stuff this year.
Absolutely.
Okay? You know, find out why exactly he did it to everybody and why we're not doing it this year. And I don't know where these definitions come from, that it's only to land only. I don't know where you're getting that. Show, show me that in writing, okay? Because that's what I disagree with. I think that's what we all disagree with. And you're saying, because you're the, the assessor, that that's the way it is. I, I, I just totally disagree with that. And to say that that, the road condition only affects land, I totally disagree with that, too. Just totally disagree with that. So that's my position. I think the reduction needs to not come across just the land, but across everything.
Well, I think, as you've heard earlier in the morning, that was a mistake that was made last year. So you actually got a tax break last year on your tax bill. That mistake has been fixed, and we're only doing the land values this year. I think Sue has already talked about the valuations. I know there's probably discredulity on the comparables, but she got the closest comparable she could get to set those values. And I hear a lot of people think my, hear people say, "My house is not worth what it's being assessed at." Yet when they sell it, they always sell it for more than it's assessed for.
Well, isn't the assessed value supposed to be a percentage of the actual fair market value?
We have to be within 10% of full market value per Idaho code. And the state tax commission comes in and they run racial studies on us to make sure that we're not over or under assessing properties every year. In fact, they come in twice a year.
Valley County has always made a point to be under and not over. There's a lot of counties that go over.
We try to be under 100%.
What, what was the overall increase in value in Valley County this year?
Certain areas, there was a lot. Other areas, not much.
So what was Cascade?
I have no idea.
Well, it seems like as, as assessors, they should have this information. I would think you would know Valley County and Cascade area.
It, it's not put per area. It's not like all of Cascade went in at 16%.
It just gives you kind of an idea, I think. It's just, it's just one of those data points to, to help out, okay? Like I'm, I'm saying, from my reduction last year, I still showed almost a 40% increase overall this year. How does that compare just overall with just the Cascade area?
I can show you all that information if you'll come to my office.
Well, I think there's certain, I mean, you look at Camerac, you look at some areas in McCall, the values are going up a lot more than yours are. Some areas down in the southern county where I live, they're, they're kind of flat or level or maybe a little bit. And then there's other areas I'm sure that aren't going up at all. And, and I can tell you, being in this job long enough, when the economy tanks, our values go down. You're going to see that as well.
Well, and that's another question. Why, I mean, the values down in the valley went down significantly. And we're just two hours away, and our values went up. Well, I know it's a different market, but, you know.
And Valley County.
Holy cow. The Ada County down there's been one of the fastest growing in the country for such a long time. And all of a sudden, I have a decrease in my assessed value for this year, and here I have a 40% increase?
It was all based on sales, and Valley County sales have remained very strong. They have a lot more supply than we have. We still have the demand with no supply, which drives costs. So it is all based upon the market you're in. It's all based upon your property. So in, I'm, I'm looking at this, what you're asking for would put your home value at 586,000.
Yeah.
And I think that you'd probably get a lot more than that were you to sell it today.
I don't know. I don't know.
Based upon sales.
Maybe, unless somebody figures out that they're going to have to plow their road five months out of the year.
So why have you not gotten together with your neighbors and tried to resolve that issue? That's what I keep asking. We keep hearing this every year. It's a fact and impacting us. But I still haven't heard any conversation about your neighborhood getting together and trying to resolve your issue.
Well, some people aren't interested. Some people aren't there full time, you know? I'm the one who's there full time. I do what I need to do to get access, to kind of get in, and so that I can, I can remove snow in the winter. I'm doing the bare minimum. But the road is just beyond really what neighbors are going to be able to do. And it's going to be pretty expensive, you know, to get a contractor to do something. We've already got thousands invested in equipment that we use just to do what we're doing today.
Do any of your neighbors compensate you for plowing out the road? That's really bottom issue of all.
There's, there's only one couple up there that is on the road that I plow in the winter.
Well, therefore, you are the only one having benefit from that? So it's going to be at your expense to do that.
Yeah, but I shouldn't have to do that. I shouldn't be valued the same for somebody a mile away that, you know, can drive right into their driveway.
Upper issue, and that's why you are getting that 25% break on your lot, so.
Only on the land. So, yeah. For the record, I disagree like everybody else. What you did last year, you say it was a mistake, okay? I, yeah, just don't think that's right.
Hey, any more discussion? Not an entertaining motion.
I move that we deny the appeal, JM 2314.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Know that this is the worst part of our job. I just want you guys to know that. It really is. We don't like doing this.
Okay, we'll take five minutes and then we'll come back.
So, what name is this one? 2316. Say your last name again.
Freeze.
Freeze.
Barry Freeze, 2316.
I'll answer the fries.
I'm sorry.
Name is Freeze.
I'm so sorry.
You don't, I'm sorry, I missed that you went?
I answer the fries as well as Freeze. I guess.
I love fries, just to tell you.
Well, it is fries, yes.
And I'm kind of a first-name kind of guy.
Yeah. Yeah, Grandma's cross-street makes pretty good fries.
Bet you've heard that in your lifetime.
Yes, I don't.
Okay, Barry, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I don't really wanna talk about the assessment. I don't even know what the mill rate is, and I don't know how fluid the mill rate is, so the assessment really isn't the issue, is it? It's raising taxes to meet budget. But I picked up this morning one thing, and it, that everybody's kind of got a good idea what the differences are, but there were a couple of words that were spoken this morning that I liked. A workshop and homeowners associations. I want to address that for a moment. We have a lot of property owners up on Ponderosa Estates, too. Collier View, Hilltop Loop, that's the neighborhood with the difficult road, because it's not maintained. If all the property owners came under a homeowners association that had authority to assess Rick's that road, it would not be a hardship for any single property owner. But we don't have, I don't know where we are with that. And this is where I'd like some help from commissioners, or somebody to tell me or guide me in researching what we can do to create, we have homeowners association, so how do we really sort of reinvigorate it and make it workable? And what authority do we have?
You can create a limited improvement district.
I'm sorry, I'm very hard-fearing.
You can create a limited improvement district. So, an LID actually places a tax upon the properties.
Mm-hmm.
You can collect it through property taxes every year, so that people don't have to pay it all upfront, or they can choose to pay it upfront.
Right.
So, an LID would actually take your subdivision, but you do have to have, I don't know what the percentage of the vote is. Doug, do you know on an LID? You'd have to research what an LID, what percentage of approval you have to have. But what it is, is it's all of the residents coming together agreeing to tax themselves for a specific improvement in their neighborhood.
But I, how you actually get into this, and I'd like to sit down and have my hearing devices on, talk to somebody when I want about this.
I'll give you one of my business cards, and I will help research this.
Okay, perfect.
So, Sue, when you guys put those subdivisions together.
You know, I don't want to be interrupting.
You guys need an LID.
In neighborhood, you mean?
Yeah, when you guys put that neighborhood together.
That's the same card.
Did it?
Same one.
It really wasn't their subdivision, but it was a combination of a few subdivisions, or what?
I think he put all the problem parcels into a neighborhood so he could address it all at once.
Right.
To make sure it was a, like, fair and equitable for everybody the same. It is, I think, why he did it that way.
I'm talking about the way it is now, the way you guys have structured it now.
Okay, so now, it is, okay, so they got rid of the little tiny neighborhood.
Right.
And he put it back into the 428-200 neighborhood, which is, you know, that area, the bigger portion of that area, okay? Because we have to be able to do that. We only get so many sales. So, we have to assess property off of those sales every year, as you know, by Idaho code, okay? When you have a problem area like these folks are experiencing, you can go put adjustments on that property. And that's what we have done. Now, the first assessment that went out, it was, those adjustments got taken off because he changed the neighborhood number, which took the adjustment off unbeknownst, and we didn't know. So, as soon as they called and we realized what had happened, we went, oh-oh, went back in, and Noreen actually went in and put those adjustments on every single one of those parcels and sent out an amended notice.
Right.
The type of problems that they are experiencing, topography issues, access issues, location issues, the road, are all issues that in our appraisal world, we would apply an adjustment to the land, but not to the house. Or any other improvement, for that matter, because that's really not fair to everyone else.
So, now.
If the house, wait, if the house had structural issues damaged by whatever reason.
Fail, fire.
Okay, that would constitute some sort of an adjustment either on the condition of the home, or somehow to give them an adjustment on the improvement value. But on the land, and I realize they don't understand the guidelines that we have to follow and what Idaho State statute says. I understand they don't understand that, but.
And the problem is what most people don't understand, the reason we're here, is, so if we give you a tax break, it shifts to every other taxpayer that's out there. We have to equalize all taxes across the entire region. That's our responsibility. So, no one is getting, you know, a lower tax rate than everybody else. I mean, it should be that all of us are accepting.
All right, let's look at solutions to them. It's not the problem of how it's set up, but what can we do? So, I would like to move forward in that. I will write and/or call you, and I think there's obvious solutions to it myself. And maybe I'm just being Pollyannaish about this, but.
I do believe I brought this up last year with your group, too. So, let's get together, let's have a homeowners association.
With this.
Let's have a meeting at somebody's house. Let's all get together and discuss what the issues are and what can be resolved. But we do need a workshop. We three need to see all of the evidence together and make decisions together. I can come and talk about what some of the solutions may be. I'll research an LID so you guys have that information. But this, I just want you to know, this happens all over the county, and we can't go back and fix what happened in the past. Alls we can do is make the best decision on today moving forward and try and.
I mean, I hate have to deal with yellow pine.
Yellow pine.
Yes, I mean.
Getting there is an issue.
Getting there is a heck of an issue. That drive alone, and when it gets a little dark at night, you feel like a character in a Stephen King novel.
That's a really, well, and that's a really good discussion point, because people want to live there year-round.
Right.
They may or may not have access year-round.
They're all on airplanes. Now.
They don't.
I know, I know. I, I know. Okay, so, you rule as you rule, I will look forward to getting in touch with you, because I think there are solutions and they're there.
Barry, I really appreciate that attitude, because in the past, we didn't have anybody from that area that really wanted to take that on and try and get the owners together. Let's figure out and solve our own problem. A lot of it dealt with, you know, the liability of us working in the county road. We can fix that easily. The big issue with that road is it's not gonna be that expensive. I don't think it's gonna be as much as people think to build up. Even if you did a quarter of a mile a year, within two or three years, you'd be done, or, you know, three years, however long that takes. But the big issue is on that southeast face of Hilltop, that is gonna be too steep for the county to ever take that on to plow it. So, you're gonna have to get some right-of-way and some movement where that road goes, so that we take the steepness out of it before we're ever gonna be able to plow it or take it on. And that's the issue, honestly.
Yeah. Challenge theirs, having Ron McLean move his totem pole.
Sounds like a whole separate issue.
Oh, it's a beauty. Anyway, thank you for your time. We really appreciate it, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to make sure, Barry, you agree with what the assessor's done, we're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we deny the appeal, 2316, and accept their appraised value.
Thank you for being part of the solution to the problem.
Moved in second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We'll answer your question a little bit. When Anthony does, and it might help, Mr. Gerbert here, when Anthony does an analysis, he does pull out land and improvements to be able to base those analysis. So, he's doing land separately from his analysis.
From the structures, yeah.
So, I understand your point where when a property is sold, it's the whole thing. When Anthony does an analysis, he's actually looking at the land sales and at a wholesale. But when he does that, he pulls those improvements out and analyzes them individually.
And that's fine how you do it. It's just that I want to see, Sue, where does it say in this Idaho code or whatever, that your assessment based on road condition only affects the land? Show me where it's, I want to see where it says that.
Well, I'll tell you what. I've had hearings all day today, but I will hold yours out, and I will call you when I have that together.
My email address is on my thing. Send it to me where it says that.
You got it.
Where are we going next? Is Mr. White here? Certainly not.
Uh, no, so we have actually two more in this area. So, we have Mr. Falconer's appeal, which is JM 2313.
And he's the one that's in Florida?
Uh, yes.
Is his issue the exact same?
Yes, none of these, none of these folks sent in any comparables, which is what you're supposed to do when you file an appeal.
So, you got the information, or?
I got it right here, hold on. I'll get it to you.
So, Chris, you know, we're looking at a subdivision like that. I mean, if you pulled out and we could see the whole thing, that would be, that whole subdivision there.
This whole sub, yeah, so from this top here all the way south.
Is considered one subdivision? It's not included with the one above it?
Correct. They are, they're considered, it's funny, because they are considered Ponderosa Estates, but there's one, two, and three, or I can't remember how many.
One and two, I think.
Different phases of when the developer created them.
So, would one HOA cover all of it?
That's up to them.
Not necessarily.
That's totally up to their.
Yeah, that's, we don't, we don't govern that.
It could be one HOA for the second subdivision, it could be one HOA for the first subdivision. They could have a whole for the whole entire thing. It depends on the.
It would have to be separate, because Ponderosa Shore's number one enjoys honey-maintained roads and snowplowed roads. There's no way if you develop an HOA for number two, you're gonna be able to assess all of those people with money for snow removal where they already enjoy it.
Yeah.
That's been the argument about using those values in that subdivision.
Robert.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on down. This is, we doing Falconer, this is 2313.
Hang on. I just want to make sure I've got his name written down, so I don't forget to get this information for him. Mr. Gerhart, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I gotcha. I won't forget you're on the to-do list. Okay, sorry, moving on here.
So, he's just questioning the increase in county average.
Yes.
And also the.
60% of net taxable property value.
Okay.
Provides no services or review your complaint.
Okay.
These two, these two are the same.
This is still in that Hilltop area.
So, he's asking for it on the house as well.
So, let's see, let's see, talking about the discrepancy of 84406.
Where you at?
Um, here.
I don't know. I didn't understand what he meant by that.
He's questioning last year's land value over this year's land value. It went up about that much.
Which it's.
Well, is.
The difference of 93,350.
And these are the amended returns, so it already shows the 25% off of the ground.
So, the 259656 does have the break.
Say that one more time.
The land value of 259656 includes the 25% reduction, right?
Are you looking at Falconer?
Yeah.
So, the land value of how much?
No, that includes.
You're looking at the total.
I'm looking at last year's, you're right. The land value, okay, here we go. I did that wrong, sorry. My mistake.
The 115,627 value is the land value with the 25% negative adjustment.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where the 84 came from.
I couldn't, I wasn't able to figure that out.
Sue, the tax notices we have don't show 115,627. The tax notice we have shows a land value of 90,680. And last year's land value is 43,369. And we don't, we don't have that, this, whatever your guys' breakdown here is, we don't have a tax notice that actually reflects that anywhere.
So, what you're asking for is to show that minus 25% reduction off the land.
I'm wondering if this does show it. They should have an adjusted assessment notice.
Oh, I see where he's got the discrepancy.
It was Falconer. Yep.
He just got, he's got it off last year's value. To this year's value.
The.
That difference is sixty-three four ninety.
Well, and even our.
Two fifty-nine minus one eighty-nine.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. We need to wait on this one until we get a correct. Do you want to look and see what's here?
I do.
That doesn't make sense.
What doesn't make sense?
Well, what you gave us. Any of these numbers are not reflected on the taxes.
That's because he, this is something that the property owner sent in. So after we sent him an amended notice, okay, that's his land value, the certified land value, which is stated right here. And then his improvement value, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand three eighty-eight, is right there for a total value of three fifty-four uh zero one five.
Normally, we get an adjusted notice.
It's the next page.
I know, he just.
Next page.
No, that's a twenty-two notice. He just didn't send in the amended notice that he got, is the problem.
Would you have that for us?
Yeah, yeah, the numbers are stated here on the letter where we're at, and then it's also written right here, Sheri.
Oh, okay.
On the bottom, right here. That's the most recent values.
Hmm.
Oh, eighty-nine, it's just the difference. He's just questioning that large of an increase.
Hmm.
Which is again, based on sales.
Fifty-nine. Oh.
Went up ninety-four thousand.
That's nothing. Wait till Microsoft gets going down the valley.
And he uh as well is receiving a negative twenty-five percent off his land value.
Right, people are questioning values, but it's based on sales, and we are totally different from Ada County. And Ada County's values are already on the way back up, so.
So on the second page with the comps and then the subject, the best comp, uh the closest to the square footage, built in ninety-three though, we come in at two ninety-four. Um, the subject's property was built in two thousand fourteen, uh so he's at three oh two. Uh depreciation, of course, is playing a factor in the comp. It's much older than the subject property. But those are all in the same, um, the same house grade.
Right.
All right, some conversation, so. Ready for a motion or?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we deny JM twenty-three thirteen.
Second. Who's in second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Where's the front page?
That is the front page. Oh, when they sent it in, it got cut off?
Yeah, I don't have the.
Well.
Signature page, do we have on there?
Well, so maybe if you'll sign date and then I guess just write denied. That's what they sent in to us. What a matter of can't.
Oliver's been waiting on the phone for what?
I sent message down.
Okay.
To have him calling and letting know you're running way behind.
Okay.
We just have one more in this area that needs to be heard. Um, Mr. White?
Richard N. White, the second. Uh, this will be twenty-three seventeen.
Who are you talking to, Noreen?
It's hammered on both sides.
Oh, he's got the top lot.
Yeah, that one that's highlighted there.
You know, it seems like I remember last year, there was some discussion about, maybe Sue remembered, they were gonna put a lot, a road up through here to that lot?
Or maybe it was just this lot. It's farther down, it's farther north, it's called, Collier.
Further up.
Oh, it's right there.
They did put, they did.
Well, there it is, that's the road, yes. Is that a pretty rough road?
There's only one cabin up in there. And that's, that's not as long, but that homeowner did spend some money, but it's a private road.
Right.
That's a private road in that county.
I did find out one time, it was a question over on West Mountains, he was asking about roads. There are quite a few county roads that are public roads. When I talked to Mickey, they're, 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 they're recognized as a county road, but they're not a maintained public.
It's a mile.
And the issue over there, most of those are thirty-foot right of ways. So they're not wide enough to build a county road in them.
Oh, that's why, okay.
And we keep them as public roads because for ease, easement access to other properties into the future.
So they're designated, designated as a county road, but we can't maintain them because they're not wide enough. Is that right?
I'm wondering if it's designated as a county, I shouldn't say as a county road, maybe it's designated more as an address road?
No, they're county roads. We have tons of county roads, public access to them, but we do not maintain them.
Well, I understood, I understood that, that's where, because she, uh, they were questioning some easements.
And that's why we keep them.
Yeah.
And not turn them back just public, or private roads, because there is a future opportunity to access through there to a future uh subdivision in the future, or to maintain people's right of ways.
Okay.
So.
That makes more sense, okay.
And if you remember, we had actually some landowners last year on Joe's Road that actually built the road.
Had big trouble.
And gotten into some hot water with drainage issues. We should probably go over there and take a look and see how that's draining. I gotta write myself a note to do that. Yeah, that worked out. Anyway, Sue, go ahead.
Uh, appeal number JM two-three-one-seven for Mr. Richard White. Uh, have you had, you guys have been looking over his, what he sent in, correct?
It's the same argument.
It, it is. Um, he is also receiving a negative twenty-five percent adjustment. Um, when you go in and look at the sales, um, I only had one average plus sale in there. Um, but, so I included at one grade, or half a grade below, half a grade above. Uh, we're right in between um his two-sixtieth per square foot. But he is receiving the reduction in the land value.
Does he have two improvements on this?
Uh.
Two H, each?
Hang on.
He must, a house and a shop, maybe?
Nope, this just has a house.
It's a rural residence sub and then a resident improvement.
What are you looking at?
One acre is the house, all, the rest of it's all, the rest of the ground that they.
Okay, so he has over an acre, but only one, but only one acre will qualify for a homeowner's exemption, so as you know, that's valued at full market value. Then anything over the acre doesn't have the H on it, but both of those two, top two lines are land value.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, or we um deny.
Appeal twenty-three seventeen.
Twenty-three seventeen.
Second. Who in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Can we sign this one? Do you got the original?
I got the original. Okay, we probably ought to move on to the phone hearing. For um, it's for Fred Oliver, but Scott Leep is in Montana. I don't know what the, he's just the person representative, uh, representing this appeal, and I do have a signed affidavit.
Give the number.
That's still on this sheet here?
So that would be twenty-three eighteen, Fred Oliver.
Yes, it's on the schedule.
We have a number to call?
Yes.
Phone hearing's at ten AM?
It's okay, I sent word that we were running late.
Oh, good grief. This is a whole book. Twenty-two ten Payette Drive, I know where that's at. Twelve feet at Pay Lake Frontage.
Hey, let me know when you guys have a chance to look that over and let me know when you'd like me to begin. Oh, we got a caller, sorry.
Yeah, and I, you got a number somewhere?
Yeah, it's right there on the front of his appeal packet over on the right. It says Scott Leep. And then it's a four oh six nine two five.
How do I get on this thing? Which one? Here's the one. Hey Scott, this is Commissioner Hasbrook in Valley County. Um, I understand you're gonna represent the state of um.
Fred Oliver.
What's that?
Fred Oliver.
Fred Oliver?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? So this is that time in that hearing?
That does that appeal. Yes, sir.
Um, and the way this usually works is you kind of get to go first, and then any rebuttal or questions from the assessor or from us will do afterward. So I'll turn it over to you.
I understand. Thank you. Uh, thanks for facilitating a phone appearance. I uh value the process and would like to have been there, but I was just in Idaho last week, so this was too fast of a turnaround.
Mr. Chairman.
And uh, I know you're running behind, I think our argument is fairly straightforward.
Scott, can you hold on a second? I forgot to do something.
Yeah.
I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I have to swear you in.
Absolutely, I'm raising right now.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So have you gone?
I do.
Thank you for doing that. Now you can go.
Sure. Probably a couple of housekeeping items. First, the assessor and her staff or group people, um, you know, we think the process of mass appraisal inherently involves broad market swaps and then trying to work backwards to correlate individual properties. Even the state acknowledges the gap between assessed value and act, actual value, so we're not alleging any nefarious intent. We just think our property represents a value that's gotten out of TQ, and so we got to the point where we had to lodge a protest. The other housekeeping item I should say is that at some point in our appeal, we used the term inflated comparable. And that's sort of a loaded term that suggests some kind of ulterior motives. We don't think that's true at all, but um my finance professor gave me an example in college, and I've never forgot it. He said, my nephew is two years old and he's two feet tall. So if I'm fifty years old, I should be a hundred feet tall and everybody laugh. So we just think that when you're talking about comparables, there's effective ranges that they apply to. And so when we say inflated, it's not alleging bad faith from the assessor's office. It's just we think it's gotten out of our range. Uh, I'll keep rambling. One of the drawbacks of being on the phone is I can't assess non-verbal cues, so please just loudly stop me if there's anything you want to talk about. Uh, so with that background, uh, I said, what makes twenty-two ten Payette Drive differently? We started with a six starting point and a certified appraisal from twenty-sixteen. Uh, we included that for your convenience, but the, at that time, the appraiser set the bricks and sticks for three hundred and sixty.
Oh, no, did we lose you?
Are you still there? Hello? We lost you. Is this Scott?
Yep, sorry, I don't know if I did that or he did that.
No, it wasn't us.
Okay, I apologize.
It was Verizon.
So if, if we started at three hundred and fifty-five thousand, how is the issue, is just how to roll that forward? Started at home value, and the data we had access to, just that over that period of time, they've increased about ten percent. Uh, now the assessor may have different measure, we just ask that we don't, uh, in that category of not use outside of the standard comparables, we wouldn't use whitetail neighborhood properties. And we think if any result, the reason we had to raise our hand in protest is that you don't get to four times an increase over that brief little period. Um, we understand comparable sales are certainly hard to come by. Our realtor has said that some houses are on the market for roughly a thousand days. So it's tricky to pick comparables. Ours that we were able to find was listed in December twenty-twenty-two, built in nineteen seventy-five, twenty-one hundred square feet. And uh, it worked out to four hundred and forty-nine dollars a square foot. Um, so uh, and we should acknowledge, you know, we know that the rules are that the cutoff is sort of December twenty-twenty-two. Uh, our only point would be a, I think the assessor has the same problem because they talk about forward adjusting comparables. And so um, the other point relative to value is that it was um listed in December twenty-twenty-two for one point three million, and ultimately it sold for less than that, so one point three sure wasn't the number. Uh, in our conversation with the appraiser, uh, he referenced to, uh, that I would call uh concerning. Uh, there was reference to a five million dollar purchase where they intended to bulldoze the house. And we would just submit to you that we don't think that constitutes uh a fair approximation of the house value. One of the things in a market such as McCall that you run into is the wild speculation over real estate. And we hope that in just focusing on the improvements or the house value, we've normalized for that. We place a lot of faith in the state's appraisal process, so, you know, we don't object to the one point nine million for a half an acre on the lakefront. Um, but we think this process has resulted in, um, you know, a twenty-four hundred square foot house built in nineteen eighty-five that's gotten out of whack. Um, so then we included an element um about, you know, the result that happens if you only chase comparables. It's a famous finance example, but in the sixteen hundreds, by chasing what the next person would pay, uh, tulips ended up selling for roughly forty thousand dollars um in the sixteen hundreds. And so we think any analysis of comparables is incomplete without cost. And so again, our comparable measured out to about four hundred and forty-nine a square foot. That was a twenty-one hundred square foot house built in nineteen seventy-five. Um, Mr. Oliver's engaged in real estate and we're sort of contractors at heart. And in the Boise metropolitan area, we're building luxury duplexes for one hundred and thirty-two a square foot. And we just entered into a contract for somebody else to build a two thousand square. and we just entered into a contract for somebody else to build a two thousand square foot house for us for a hundred and fifty-seven.
At least I'm in Valley County and built for that.
Right.
Right, well, so, uh, to that point, uh, we understand McCall's a different market, uh, McCall's a different market. You know, after nine eleven, people were selling gas for nine dollars a gallon, but, um, we think that, you know, some level of price gouging is taking place and to that extent, we have attached an affidavit from Michael Hendricks, he's our primary lending officer and he's worked with a contractor to complete a house. They think they're getting, they think they're getting a certificate of occupancy next month and, but again, the bricks and sticks costs worked out to be two hundred and thirty-five a square foot, so uh, you could double it and you'd be at four seventy, which is somewhere around the business end of what we think that's fair value of nine hundred thousand is, so look, we know that trust fund folks or out-of-stagers are speculating based on that fear of missing out or, you know, the euphoria of having a place in McCall. We think that the fundamental premise behind market value is a rational buyer and, um, you know, or the assessor's manual says a rational buyer won't spend more on any one property than they would on the next reasonably priced, so at some level, if we look at that exorbitant sale in McCall as a pie chart, again, we think the fair value is some amount of that pie and their utile or their euphoria value of owning land on, in McCall fills out the rest of the balance of that pie. Uh, you know, we don't put blind faith in any single data point, but when we have multiple data points at the four hundred and fiftieth square foot or less, you know, if we look at current, uh, construction costs, we just think it points to this notion that this one was a mess as it fits into the greater scheme. I won't, uh, take up any more of your time, but I'm happy to answer any questions on what we've presented.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, I'll now turn it over to the assessor and, and we'll see what she's got.
Thank you, Scott. The subject property is located at twenty-two ten Payette Drive in McCall. It consists of point five-five-three of an acre and it has one hundred and twelve point three-three front footage on the Payette Lake. It has a twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty square foot home, we have it graded as a good in average condition. It was built in nineteen-eighty-five, it was remodeled in two thousand and eleven and we have a two thousand and five effective year on it because of the remodel. Uh, the parcel also has a five hundred and twenty square foot attached garage and a boat dock. Below, you will see the values listed for the last three years. The appellant did offer one comparable. Unfortunately, that comparable is not a lakefront sale. And it did sell in twenty-three, it will be used in next year's analysis for, you know, non-lakefront properties, uh, in the analysis.
Where was that, Sue?
Uh, it's sixteen fifteen Brook Lawn Street in McCall. I believe it's second tier back from the lake.
And looking at the square footage on the comps, really this property is not even really in the middle, there's some that's
No, well-
seven hundred and forty-four, there's some seven eighty-nine and these are similar age homes, maybe bigger homes.
So I'll draw your attention, um, so I gave you all of the lakefront sales, the improved lakefront sales and if you'll notice the grade on the homes, the one I highlighted is the same grade as the subject property, so obviously that would be the best comp because it's apples to apples. Same grade of home. So the sale is being assessed at five seventy-four, um, per square foot, whereas the subject property property is at five seventy-two, uh, same year built. The subject property has a little more square footage than the sale, but the homes are both graded as good quality construction.
And the next one really, Sue, is that one built in two thousand and four, effective year two thousand and four, I realize it's excellent grade and a little more square footage, but that came in at seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars a square foot.
But the home is graded higher on that one.
Excellent grade.
Right, so I just, I didn't want to just give you the one sale, I wanted to paint the picture so you guys could see where, where we were at.
Now, what, what changes the square footage cost based on the physical size of the home? Is that any part of it?
Generally, the, the, it's kind of the Costco mentality, the, the larger or the more square footage, it usually the assessed value is lower, just like with the land, the more land you have, the lower your assessed value per acre. So same concept with, with the construction.
Square footage and the construction.
Yep. And then, of course, you've got depreciation, you know, there's many things at play, so.
Right.
That you called out some of the costs. Sorry, I'll take my microphone back. Um, you called out some of the costs, most particularly in the Boise market. I've been a home builder for forty years and the costs up here obviously are much higher, but for a basic home right now without ground, we're still quoting it four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot as without ground, basic home, not all the upgrades and certainly not on the lake. Those lakefront properties are escalating, you know, much more rapidly because there's such a finite number that even come on the market. And so that, that just, you know, creates a huge discrepancy in, in anything that you look at off-site.
I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry, I, I, I agree with all of that, I think four fifty is a fair number and the, the thing that's tempting to do is that location to geography should relate back to the value of the lot, right? That's why we're being assessed at one point nine million and didn't discuss that, we know that lakefront properties should be sure of premium. But the reason we want to focus strictly on the bricks and sticks is that, um, unless it's a challenging build, we don't think the geography relates to the actual cost, or the house that you have in front of you, right? In terms of making it more expensive to build that house. Um, so we think we've normalized for the lakefront by, um, agreeing frankly with the assessed value for the land. It's that twenty-four hundred square foot house built in nineteen-eighty-five that even you say built today
No, no, no.
Yeah, that's
And Scott, I would tell you that we just remodeled two homes down on the lakefront and the costs were much higher because of the requirements of the city of McCall and the, uh, and how you have to actually, uh, protect the lake and all the environmental issues that are there as well as these are all very tight builds, so our cost to build next to the lake was much higher than any other property that we actually build to. And I do think you have to take that into account, not only the ground itself, but the location getting there and the extra requirements. On, on this particular property, you'd have to go through a whole city of McCall, um, review in order to even touch the, the home for remodels, so I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it's applicable where you're at in the city.
Anything else, anybody else want to add? I think, uh, the assessor's pretty fair here in the values, looking at the comps. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, we deny the appeal twenty-three eighteen and go with the assessed value.
A second.
Do the second on a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Scott, for, appreciate you calling in.
I'm good, unless you guys need a break?
I just don't know what we're doing in this.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll take one.
You have yours here? Let's do Noreen's next. You had a feeling?
It's not a song. I got a feeling.
Okay, so where are we going, Noreen?
We are going to go to NA twenty-three ten.
All right, line nineteen, Mark Martin?
Thank you.
Hey.
Located right here. One more. Thank you, ma'am. What's she doing, Martin?
Oh, thank you.
There we go.
Do we get the cover sheet?
This one is, yeah, I, do you have that?
I think they'll do it a little bit differently.
I do mine a little bit-
Who does her that way, but they'll kind of do it a little bit differently.
So, yeah, I do mine a little bit different because I, I like waste so much paper.
I'm a former law-
Perfect.
I'm a former logger, I waste all kinds of paper.
Just put that on camera.
Me too.
I'm proud of it.
Mr. Martin, he's located there on Chipmont Way and I put it up on the screen, it's highlighted. Um, he has a very nice little cabin, eleven hundred and ninety-four square feet. Built in two thousand and nineteen, sits on point two-six-nine of an acre. We currently have him assessed at six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four. So, um, let me the backside of his log home he has. Which, he says that he realizes that they're in an area that's exploded, our home is very small, no central air conditioning or heating, no garage, it is on a dirt road with a gravel driveway, it is a log home, which is not desirable to many, it just cannot be compared to the fancy homes with paved driveways, garages, bells and whistles. You know, I understand it completely, all, there's gravel roads all over and I, you know, I hope he doesn't think that we're comparing him to Spring Mountain Ranch, which we're not. So the comparables I have put down there are mostly on gravel roads. If you take a look, he didn't provide any comps, but you can see that the four comps that I did provide on that spreadsheet comes out to an average price per square foot of four eighty-nine, sixty-eight and he's coming in at four sixteen twelve. So I think we're being very fair and equitable and I chose all within the same neighborhood that he is being in and his price per square foot is lower. So I request that the Board of Equalization sustain the twenty-three thousand of six hundred and seventy-seven.
Honestly, if you look at the year build on some of these other ones, he's still way under
Exactly.
much older homes.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I mean, he should, he should be very happy with where he's at. The cost to build, I don't know who built it for him, but the cost to build's probably over that today, so.
I, I didn't get a chance to call him, uh, I received his BOE after Monday, late Monday.
Okay.
Didn't get a chance to give him a call to see if I could talk to him, I did not receive a call prior, so I
Okay.
Hundred and fifty-one thousand for a fifth of an acre. That's amazing, that's over six hundred thousand acres, I could get six hundred thousand an acre.
You can't even find a lot for sale for
No.
that now.
No.
Um, and the, you know, most people don't understand that ninety percent of homes in Valley County don't have central air, they don't need it.
Well, he's not being assessed for it either, so.
No, we, I don't have it on his assessment, he doesn't even have a wood stove, I didn't either, that was his home is very
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we deny, um, NA two-three-one-oh and go with the assessor's value.
Second, do the second on a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Are you wanting to sign this one or do you have originally?
Wow.
Yeah, I only-
You guys are so lucky this year, what?
I only have one, but I'm going to present a couple more for both of us.
Got it.
He is here, but I would like him to stay in his
Perfect.
Did you wrap his head with a mask?
So is his the BB?
Yeah.
Craig withdrew his, Tracy Barris.
Tracy and Janet Barris. Twenty-three oh seven, Doug. Morning, Oak. Good to see you, bye.
Glad you got to see us.
Twenty-three oh seven's where we're going next?
Yes. Twenty-three oh seven, you said?
Yep. Oh, thank you. Property values in other counties are decreasing. I don't it weren't, we'll find when they're going down.
Unfortunately, a different animal-
Eighty County's already gone up. Things already started going back the other direction.
What was that, where's this one, Noreen?
This one is located off of West Mountain Road, uh, it's on Thompson Drive, which is located off of West Mountain Road. South end of Cascade. Between, I believe, um, the CRs and I think it's south of Godtaker. Pull it up, we can see it.
Thompson, oh, I know where that's at.
So this particular subdivision sometimes is a little difficult
Never lived there.
to assess, only only because of some of these homes in here do have a boat dock, they have access a slip right, I guess you'd call it. So they have access to the airstrip also. And it's in their deed. This particular gentleman, I'm not sure if it is or not.
It's in Cascade. Have a picture of the house?
There's one on here.
Way, way down that road.
There's a garage. Uh, no, I do not have a picture of his house.
There's his view.
There's his view.
Wow, nice.
And that view may have been taken a while back and these trees might be bigger now, I'm not sure. So, let's see, this parcel is on point three zero seven eight acres with a good land grade. You don't, I, none of West Mountain really has excellent unless you're on the east side of West Mountain. Only because of, you get that, if you're right along West Mountain Road, you get all that traffic, you get all the cars. So, taking that, I mean, they have beautiful views, but the sales don't Uh, this is a twenty-three hundred and ninety-four square foot home built in two thousand and two, it has, does have an average plus grade in an average condition. The spreadsheet attached will show you our comparables that we had. Wasn't many sales on the West Mountain side, on the south, more of the south end of Cascade. You did have to look a little bit more north and up near the North Lake, which a little tight with that area, but, um, if you see there that the, his, his average per square foot was two sixty-three and if you look at the comparables, he's coming in Two of the homes that we did look at were a little bit newer than his, he does have a little bit more depreciation. For the most part, his land grade.
Yeah, it goes again back to the fact that, first of all, eighty county's totally separate, I don't care what other counties are doing and it's already recovering. And, secondly, there's just no supply up here, the demand is still here, costs are remaining the same, so. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we deny the number, BB two-three oh-seven, and accept the appraiser's value.
Second, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mark withdrew. It's Munson, next one, Munson maybe?
Well, oh, we haven't approved one yet.
That one's supposed to be in person.
I'm just having him sign the last one.
This will be, uh, twenty-three, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Shawes. Amanda and Jeff.
Jeff Shawes.
Thank you, ma'am.
They better be giving you cookies or something to do all this for.
I'm up for that.
Oh, yeah. Those are yummy.
PMI removal process, what is that, you know, PMI removal process? Very last statement down in the corner here, PMI removal process.
Let me see if I can find it.
I think it has something to do with their mortgage company as an element.
It's the property mortgage insurance, so they had an appraisal done in order to get their PMI removed.
It's just nice to have a real.
But, um.
Know what we're talking about.
But, every single appraisal is done for different purposes. And so, you can get an appraiser to say three different things based upon the need of the appraisal.
With the broker even admitted, it could be between seven hundred and one point two.
And Mary Knuckles has been doing it a long time.
And it even states in her appraisal that it's not.
She did a break, a broker price appraisal then, and not, yeah, so she did a BPO, which is not, it's not a appraiser, a certified appraiser that did it. It was an agent based upon sales in the area, and that's, that can be all over the place, so.
Uh, it looks like it was done on April of this year, so it's done on, yes.
The comps that were provided by the appellant, um, let's see, four, four out of the five that she did provide were, one was a current listing, two were twenty-twenty-three sales, and one is a pending twenty-twenty-three sale. So those will be, hopefully we get, get those values returned to us so we can use them in twenty-twenty-four. The one that was actually right in her neighborhood came in at, uh, two sixty-two fourteen a square foot, which we have her higher. I believe it would be due to the square footage. That house is twenty-three oh-four and she's only sitting at twenty-seventy. If you look at the county comps and like areas, all within the same neighborhood, they reached all over McCall with their neighborhood, so they went to the east side, the west side. They even dropped down into the kind of the Lake Fork area, as we call it, it's still the one that they use is still in, uh, McCall, considered McCall, but it's not valued at, or assessed at a different time in the year. Uh, we're, I think they went over towards Spring Mountain Ranch on two of these, Aspen Ridge area. So, but I, all the comps we had were all within the same, I used all of them within the same neighborhood, and all that were sold in twenty-twenty-two. Did their breakout for price per square footage for those homes, came to three forty-five, and their home was sitting at three forty-eight. I believe the reason she would be approximately three dollars square foot higher is she has a two thousand seventeen home, the rest of them are older homes.
Yep.
The older homes are getting that depreciation, so consequently, the sales kind of. So I request that the Board of Equalization sustain the twenty-twenty-three value of nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four.
And you can see why they have heartburn, but, you know, that's almost two hundred thousand assessed value going up. I get it.
Yeah.
I get it.
I understand, I understand it too, so.
I would be like, ooh, I'm excited, man. Some people don't see it that way.
Especially if you're gonna retire and move away.
Yeah.
Well, that's if you're gonna sell it, I mean, the whole thing is, is that people, just because your value goes up, does not mean your taxes are going up.
Right.
It is all based upon what mill levy is at the end of the day.
Equity just went up big time.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion, we deny BB twenty-three, twenty-seven.
Second.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Having fun yet?
Oh, yeah, just putting D's on everything. Do we approve anything?
I'm sure we did.
It's justified, these guys do a great job. Pretty rare to find something. Better.
Right. Or sometimes we'll have a square footage that might be wrong and they'll peel that and we'll fix that, and that's easy, dude.
Usually we're able to take care of that
In office.
before the appeal process.
Yeah.
So we had Jacob's Manor last year that had some that Anthony had missed certain properties within there, so we moved those down and.
Mike Munson?
He is a, um, in person and we have him scheduled.
Oh.
Well, his appeal came yesterday afternoon, so we haven't weren't sure what day you guys, we're not gonna get them all done today. So, I guess we need to ask, I should have asked this a little while ago, it won't be but a handful. And who knows if we have any in the mail today.
What time are you leaving tomorrow? So these all the, that's all appeals?
Not when I was planning on it.
Total. Where do you want to go next?
Well, hold on, if we need to get a phone call into Mr. Munson, if he wants to make a personal appearance.
Why don't you call him and see if he can come in later on this afternoon after lunch or something?
We have Jeff.
If he wants to come in now, bring him in now, we can shuffle.
Jeff Downey wants to do the same.
My mom would say, he's next to the.
Well, that one was withdrawn.
When you say located, what do you mean?
I don't know if he lives here in town, I don't know.
Oh, I understand.
He lives.
Oh, okay.
You know, he's, he's also a Crescent Rim.
Oh, you know what, you guys, let, let me help you, uh, he said he wanted a personal appearance, however, oh, there it is, we do have a phone number. Well, I have the original, so you'll have to.
I have, I have it down at my desk.
He's got a cell phone number right here?
Yep.
So, you guys can hear him sometime between, what, two and four, because don't you have agenda items from one to two?
I don't know what else.
One to one thirty.
So it would be safe to ask him to come anywhere from one thirty to three thirty?
Three, I want to go home and change before the party. Get my hair done, you know.
Do you want us to paint your nails too?
No, I haven't shaved, I'm feeling kind of scratchy. Just whatever he can work in, we'll just, if we gotta do it tomorrow with two of us, we can do it tomorrow.
I have another one. I have another one.
Hey, let's do, let's do Seuss, we still got plenty of time this morning.
I'm doing, uh, Deborah Huber, the, uh, Grandy Properties, appeal number SL two-three-two-four.
Can we do Highway Chapel two this morning?
The Brownies?
Uh, I, I, oh, he needs to be.
Grand Properties? So, twenty-three, twenty-four?
Okay, stop. She wants cookies and it's gonna be expensive, so.
Are you gonna bring me cookies? I would definitely bring you cookies.
Cookies are good.
We're really not mean, you need to get your feet wet, so we've been mean all morning, haven't we?
We told, I feel like I'm in school and you're like.
We told him, we told her it'd be all right.
In fact, it's almost a requirement.
Front of the principals, we didn't, we didn't do the, we, we weren't the principal, we went in front of the principal.
Yeah.
Okay, this is, uh, shoot, I just lost the number.
Uh, SL two-three-two-four.
Two-three-two-four.
Grandy Properties, LLCC. Uh, the subject property is located at fifteen oh-eight McCall Avenue, it consists of point six eight nine seven, has an excellent land grade. Um, she had, can you, she has the property highlighted, so the parcel that sits right in front between the lake and the subject property is owned by the city of McCall. So technically, this property is not lakefront, that's why we have an excellent land grade on it, rather than, uh, valuing it by the front foot. But they have open beach right there in front of them. Uh, I have spoke to Deborah numerous times, um, last year she came in and we went over her complete property record. Um, I made any, uh, changes on that property record, uh, you know, per our conversation. Uh, anyway, she called again this year, we went over some things, uh, her home is seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet.
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet, yes.
Little cabin on the lake.
We have graded it as a one V, um, last year, they were concerned about the grade on the home, I offered to go do an interior inspection. Um, she was entertaining the fact that I believe her husband decided, no, they didn't want us to come out, so I did not. Uh, so.
That's been to know.
So, this home, uh, was built in two thousand two. Uh, it has an eight hundred and sixteen square foot attached garage, um, you can see the values for the last three years. The appellant offered one comparable and one listing. So the comparable is two doors down, located at fifteen oh-four McCall Avenue, it sold for two point one million in two thousand nineteen. So, obviously that would have been used in our two thousand twenty analysis. Um, the comp is thirty-eight hundred square feet smaller than the subject property. And our two thousand assessed, two thousand twenty-three assessed value for the, the comp that she provided, at this point, we are assessing them at seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents per square foot, and the subject property, we actually are assessing at six hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents a square foot.
I think her biggest issue, Sue, it sounds to me like, it doesn't feel like her basement should be even considered.
You know, and, correct, and she brings that up every, e- every time I've talked to her, and I, there's nothing more I can do for her unless I go see it and look at it, which they have declined
You want to let you?
to let me do that.
Well, it sounds like she, they've finished, you know, finished it out.
It is finished.
So, what's the issue?
I'm.
It's finished square footage.
She doesn't feel like it should be assessed.
No, no. Sue, can you explain to me again real quick, why did the land value go down?
I think all land values went down.
Was that standard across?
So, previously, we had, um, like a land grade that was between lakefront and excellent, because she just has that city of McCall Beach in front of her, it, it kind of makes that property much more desirable. The LHs, you never get sales on them, and so it's very difficult to put an accurate value on an LH land grade, which just means superior lake influence is what that LH stands for.
So because of the park in front of her, it has a lower.
She's, she's being, right, she's being grade, uh, land graded an excellent land grade, because she has anoramic view and she's right there next to the water. She is not being valued at lakefront because there is a parcel between her and the lake.
And that's city park.
And that's city of McCall, yes.
That explains it to me.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny SL twenty-three, twenty-four and go with the assessor's value.
Second, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Also, I have somebody in the audience, are you here for an appeal, sir?
It's one of our appraisers, we just don't get to see you guys enough.
Oh, there's the bed, I can't, I can't remember everybody, I'm sorry.
I get it, Maureen, it's crazy, I'm mixed up.
We're gonna deny it anyhow, so.
I know, I've heard.
Yeah, yeah. We just don't get to see you guys enough. You're in the basement.
We're in the basement. I want an appeal.
Tough, take it to the prosecuting attorney.
You missed the deadline.
I was gonna appeal, I couldn't find enough time to get this done.
Two property tax exemption appeals?
Hey. Hey. You mean four o'clock? We're doing this at one?
Four o'clock, yeah. Oh, that one you're doing at one o'clock, Mr. Chairman. Oh, man, I'm in shape.
Four o'clock's the party.
I have, uh. I have a photo frame for that. Are we doing it at one instead of four?
It has to be on the, on an agenda, and that's what we all agreed upon, is one o'clock.
I think her family's gonna be here, maybe we can do it ceremoniously again at four.
Good. All right, we'll do it, whenever.
Put that in a photo frame at lunch.
Yeah, we gotta sign it first, and we can't sign it till we approve it. Oh, I think all of us signed it, don't we?
Yes.
So this is gonna be appeal number SL twenty-three twenty, this is actually a property tax exemption appeal, Girl Scouts, this is what they have sent in.
Oh, this is exemption.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Brian, unless you want us to read this first.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to swear in?
I, no, I won't be, I won't testify, I'm just advising the assessor.
I can swear at him.
It might cost you a lot, child.
Yeah, probably.
So, um, just, I don't know if you can catch what I just said on the record, but I'm, I'm here as an advisor, legal counsel, not as a witness, so, uh, information that you should consider in the appeal is the written information and the other evidence that the assessor can provide to you on the appeal. Uh, the, just to jog your memory, the original application was declined because there was a discrepancy in the ownership of the property. The, uh, the owner of record is the Boise Girl Scouts of America Incorporated, and that is a defunct corporation according to their legal counsel. That has not been in existence for quite some time, so it was an oversight in, in correcting the recorded deed where title should have transferred, and they, they believed there was a quitclaim deed that did transfer title to Silver Sage. That is basically what the affidavit of ownership is designed to do. What I, uh, what I communicated to their legal counsel was that I, I felt like because of the time constraints of the appeal period, and, and really an affidavit of ownership is sufficient, but they should continue to work on trying to. but they should continue to work on trying to figure out how to apply a title on this and get a, some type of a deed with the attorney's office for next year. So they are going to do that, but I, I do feel it's sufficient and advise the assessor's office that this would be acceptable for proof of ownership of the property.
For two thousand twenty-three?
For two thousand twenty-three. The, the, the only other remaining issue, I guess, with this particular property was there was a, uh, of a condensed income statement that was sent with their, uh, with their original application. Uh, didn't, it didn't have as much detail as some of the other applicants, but I don't think that anybody from the county had communicated that we needed additional information from them. So, uh, that being said, we do know that this property, based on the website and the other information in the file, is being used to generate some revenue from rent, for various rental incomes. But you should have all of that information in your original application. That in and of itself is not disqualifying, uh, but it can potentially be. So, um, I do think that this is a, uh, a property that needs to be evaluated closely. If your decision is to, uh, go ahead and approve the appeal for this year, this will be one that, that I would recommend the assessor work with the owner of the property to continue to evaluate that the, that the revenue that's generated is not disqualifying revenue for purposes of exemption into, into the future. So, uh, with that, I'll stand for questions if Sue were.
Looks like in their June seven sixty, nineteen sixty-five letter, that was the intent. They just didn't apparently get it recorded or properly done.
Didn't get it filed.
Didn't finish it.
So Sue, is your recommendation that this year we go ahead and accept this based upon the, um, the letter of?
Yes.
The affidavit.
The affidavit, and they're gonna work on getting a quiet title, and we'll continue to keep in contact with them.
But put them on further notice that next year we will be looking into their financials more closely.
Yeah, you know, if they're renting the property out, generating an income that isn't in line with their.
So we would approve their appeal.
Articles of the corporation, yes, you may, yes, approve, we're going to make.
We need to state those conditions in the motion.
That would hurt.
Provide further information to you as far as income statement?
We're, we're okay with that for the year.
Just get the title.
We have one, it's not like we didn't get one at all. But just like with the other similar properties that we went ahead and approved, but we'll look a little more closely at next year.
Mr. Chairman, I would not recommend any.
Any, any conditions, okay.
Because these are annual applications, they'll have to resubmit and go through the whole process again. I also communicated to their attorney that, at the expectation of the assessor's office and the Board of Equalization on their properties, similar properties, is that, uh, it can form any, any income, any revenue needs to be consistent with their.
Mission.
Their mission in order for it to not be disqualifying. They're on notice and they can make, if they need to make any necessary changes.
So I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the appeal of SL twenty-three twenty, Boise Girl Scouts, Inc. Second. Would you second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
They did not send in an appeal form. Their cover letter basically covered, in other words, I have nothing for you to sign, but I will go in and make the necessary changes, and we have the record that Clerk Miller is.
We will need to have a written.
No, I, I understand. I just, I don't have an appeal form for him to sign.
Mr. Reliever, I don't know if I have a draft.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you so much.
So we got five more minutes, you wanna continue, or you wanna break for lunch?
We have one more property tax exemption appeal.
I can eat lunch anytime.
So this one is SL twenty-three twenty-one. Highway Chapel has, um, appealed. Are your denial of their property tax exemption and? This is what, um, Mr. Roberts has sent in for you? Um, I believe he called in on Monday, the twenty-sixth, uh, talked to the front office. He, um, asked that we email him a form. I did so. And, uh, this is what he filled out and sent back in for your consideration. So on page two is his, uh, written information to you.
Brian, is there any validity to his statement?
Chairman, Mr. Moffitt, uh, so the, so the concern over public records is, is clearly outlined in the Idaho Public Records Act. The extent that there's anything that's confidential, it's, it would be exempt from disclosure and, and not provided or made public. Uh, so, so that, to the extent that there is a concern about confidentiality of information, that's covered by the Idaho Public Records Act. Secondly, the property tax exemption statute makes it very clear that the applicant has to demonstrate that their use is in conformance with, conformance with the, uh, exemption that they've applied for. Mr. Roberts has refused to provide any evidence to that effect, and so you're really left with no evidence at all on the record. So the statute really gives you only one option, and that is deny it, because you have no evidence to base your decision on at all.
Sue, do we have an appraised value on it?
Yes. Total assessed value, uh, that was sent out, um, on an assessment, I'm sorry, what? The assessment that was sent out, uh, to Highway Chapel is a total assessed value of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand four sixty-eight. We have, the church building is assessed, and so is Mr. Roberts's house, that were both previously exempt. He also has an attached garage, detached garage, and another pole building. They are all being valued.
Is that behind the church?
It'd be to the southeast corner, I guess, behind the church. If you're looking east, the church building is here, and I believe his house sits back behind over to the right, if you're looking east.
They call him that a parsonage, or his house, or whatever.
And I do believe the church is being utilized again. I've heard that they started having services on Sunday evening. But if they don't provide that information to us, we have no way of sort of fight now.
The first time in a long time.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we, due to lack of information, that we deny the appeal of, I forgot the number.
SL twenty-three twenty-one.
Is that Doug?
A second.
Would you second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Got a question real quick.
Okay.
Of Brian. So what kind of information are, do we need? I mean.
Well, the.
Where's this at?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Thompson, the, the assessor's office sends out an application questionnaire that, uh, is, kinda outlines the information that's required to be submitted. So you've seen all these applications. In his, in his application, he basically said, I'm not gonna answer any of these questions. So it didn't answer, uh, the congregation, the meeting times, the financial information, because you also have to evaluate, just like you do on charitable properties, like the previous one, on the Girl Scouts, whether or not there is disqualifying revenue being generated, or there is a disqualifying use from those properties. So you can use a religious property in part for religious purposes, but also have a commercial use as well. And that's what you have to evaluate as Laura County Commissioners and the Board of Equalization. That's the information we ask the applicant to provide to us. How you're using the property and what revenue, if any, are you generating from it.
He's refusing to give us any information, so you can go on up the channels and fight with them.
Right.
Okay. Good with that?
Okay, can we vote? Call, call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, what do you wanna do, lunch? Okay, and we'll break.
Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, the commissioners are aware, the commissioners have a commissioner meeting scheduled for one o'clock. There are three matters, and then we can reconvene as the Board of Equalization after that. So I would say approximately one thirty, two o'clock.
Works for us.